Will the recorder please call the roll?
Counselor Dugger?
Here.
Counselor Hart, Mayor Prigg?
Here.
Counselor Hassan?
Here.
Counselor Kimmy?
Here.
Counselor Teeter?
Here.
Counselor Tivnan?
Here.
Mayor Beatty?
Here. Okay, so tonight's agenda, we're going to move a couple of things around. We have an action item for proclamation. We're going to move up to join the other proclamations. And we will be moving Agenda Bill 23193 up in between Clean Water Services and Barrows Road, since Counselor Tivnan will be signing off early. With that, do we have any public visitor comments tonight?
No, Mayor.
All right. Staff items, City Manager?
None, Mayor.
All right. We're going to start our first proclamation this evening. Tonight, we're going to issue two proclamations, one from me and one from the council. So a proclamation from the Office of the Mayor. Whereas a well-kept yard contributes to the overall beauty and well-being of a community, enriching the lives of residents and fostering a sense of pride and connection. And whereas many residents may face challenges that prevent them from maintaining their yard to city code, such as physical disability, financial hardship, or other extenuating circumstances. And whereas the J gang, a dedicated group of community volunteers, have taken it upon themselves to assist these individuals in keeping their yard in immaculate condition. And whereas through their tireless efforts, the J gang has not only improved the visual aesthetics of our community, but also significantly impacted the lives of residents by leaving a significant source of stress and worry. And whereas the selfless service offered by the J gang serves an inspiring example of community spirit and altruism, reminding us of all the impact we have when we come together to support one another. Now, therefore I, Lacy Beatty, Mayor of the City of Beaverton, do by here recognize the J gang for their outstanding contribution to our community. I ask all community members to appreciate the value and importance of community involvement and to look to the examples set by J gang as an inspiration of how we can all make our city a better place. I do believe we have some members here to accept the proclamation today.
Is it on? Testing, testing. All right. My name is Rick Riedesel. I'm the Program Manager for CoCompliance. We, as a group, have been working with Joanna and the J gang on some very difficult properties. They have been, I'm not saying a godsend, but they've been awesome because we do get stuck on some things and we're at a dead end and we contact her and she brings her group out and they do it. So I think it's wonderful. This is my coworker, Kevin Palat. This is Drew Van Der Veen. That's my boss, Kimberly McArthur. Drew will be here for another three days and he's on and upward. So I just want to give them all props. Drew was the one that kind of set everything up and set this in motion. So he wants to say just a couple of words.
Good evening, Council. Just want to recognize Joanna and her volunteers. They have come out to dozens of properties, helping residents of Beaverton who are financially or physically unable to keep their yards up. This is usually due to a complaint and she amasses just an army of volunteers, anywhere from teens on up to retired folks that will come out and just go to town on a yard that really needs a lot of attention. And she's, like I said, she's done dozens of properties for us over the last, what, two years? Two and a half years of doing this. It's been a great partnership and she really responds quickly and just marshals of volunteers to get this done. So we really appreciate that. And she's helped us, like Rick said, really close a lot of tough cases.
Well, we truly appreciate the work that you've done on behalf of our community and for our residents. And I know having an elderly parent, sometimes it's really challenging to get out there and do the yard work and keep up with things. And I will tell you, people email me all the time looking for ways to volunteer. So if you shoot me an email anytime you're trying to amass awesome people to do great things, I'd love to put them in contact with you.
Yes, please.
Mayor Beatty, thank you so much. This is such an honor to work with the City of Beaverton. And I came to, I really need to also thank Beaverton Four-Squared Church. As a landscape designer, I came to them about three years ago and said, I want to start this. I see people in need and I don't know where to go and what to do. And they said, we will support you 1,000%. So from there, we've been able to partner with Meals on Wheels. We do their yards. These guys are great to work with. Our communication is so good. And this really does go to the volunteers who, and that are of all ages. We partner, we have a summer camp, junior and high school students that volunteer their time to work on these yards and other organizations that come to our help. But yes, we could always use some more volunteers. So I will be in touch.
Thank you. Thank you for your work on behalf of the city. Have a great evening.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Well, this is a bit of a difference. So we have an action item tonight, Agenda Bill 23192, that Counselor Hassan will read on our behalf. And then before we present it, we do have to take a roll call vote.
Okay. Do you want me to ask the Library Advisory Board to come up now or like? Okay. If the Library Advisory Board members who are receiving this want to join us at the table, you're welcome to do so. I'll give you 30 seconds. One minute. Okay. Proclamation from the City of Beaverton. Whereas the freedom to read is essential to our democracy and reading is among our greatest freedoms. And whereas the City Council is committed to providing open access and allowing free inquiry at the Beaverton Library. And whereas the role of libraries is to collect and make available diverse works and information reflective of many perspectives and lived experiences, including materials reflecting the experience of marginalized and underrepresented groups of people. And whereas some individuals, groups, and public authorities work to remove or limit access to reading materials, to label controversial views, to distribute lists of objectional books or authors, and to purge libraries of materials reflecting the diversity of society. And whereas both governmental intimidation and fear of censorship cause authors who seek to avoid controversy to practice self-censorship, thus limiting our access to new ideas. And whereas Americans still favor free enterprise and ideas and expression and can be trusted to exercise critical judgment, recognize propaganda and misinformation, make their own decisions about what they read and believe, and exercise the responsibilities that accompany this freedom. And whereas intellectual freedom is essential to the preservation of a free society and a creative culture. And whereas the American Library Association's Band Books Week, celebrating the freedom to read, is observed this year with the theme Let Freedom Read. And each year is a reminder to Americans to avoid taking their precious freedom for granted. Now, therefore, the City Council of the City of Beaverton hereby recognizes October 1st through October 7th, 2023, as Band Books Week in the City of Beaverton.
Yeah, you guys, we're going to take a vote on the motion to pass it. But if you have any words before we do that, we're happy to hear them.
Just a, I'm, thank you, Councilors, for voting on this. We, we at the Library Advisory Board really do appreciate the, sorry, really do appreciate the support of the library from the City Council and the support of this proclamation. Thank you.
Council President?
Yes, Mayor, I move that we adopt resolution, sorry, I'm lost now. Action item 23192, our council proclamation for Band Book Week.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the recorder call the roll?
Counselor Teeter?
Yes.
Counselor Kimmy?
Yes.
Counselor Hart, Mayor Prigg?
Yes.
Counselor Dugger?
Yes.
Counselor Hassan?
Yes.
Counselor Tivnan?
Yes.
Mayor Beatty?
Yes. Awesome. Let's get a photo. All right. So for the rest of the agenda tonight, we will take consent. We have a few presentations. We have a few very exciting public hearings, some first readings, and some action items and a work session, followed by an executive session tonight. So as a reminder, this is a very packed agenda. And so we want to be as concise as possible as we move through things this evening. Council President, with that, I will accept the consent agenda.
I move that we accept the consent agenda. Second.
Oops, sorry. Counselor Kimmy gets it. It's been moved and seconded by Counselor Kimmy. Any discussion on tonight's consent?
Sorry. Yes. I wasn't going to get to my laptop fast enough. I just really quickly had asked the City Manager a question about AB 23183, which was the intergovernmental agreement with Washington County for Walker Road and Shendal to Southwest 150th. More a comment that I just wanted to put on the record. When counties do a lot of this work, a lot of the road traffic communication comes from the county. So I just asked if we can make sure that we're more active in communicating this out. I frequent Walker Road a lot and the traffic is bananas. And I just wanted to make sure that we sit on the record that whatever we can do, which is reasonable, that we will do to communicate out because it's a big project. Thank you.
Will the recorder call the roll?
Counselor Dugger?
Yes.
Counselor Hart, Mayor Prigg?
Yes.
Counselor Hassan?
Yes.
Counselor Kimmy?
Yes.
Counselor Teeter?
Yes.
Counselor Tivnan?
Yes.
Mayor Beatty?
Yes. All right. With that, we have our first presentation this evening, Agenda Bill 23185. Our friends are here from Clean Water Services to talk about our intergovernmental agreement. And it looks like our Assistant City Manager, Dan, will be leading this group tonight.
Sorry, just coordinating. She's coming, I think. So Dan Weinheimer, Assistant City Manager. This is a good news item, a presentation, an update on progress that we've made with partner Clean Water Services. They're going to make the presentation. I'm just here for window dressing and to introduce, really just, we've done a presentation to the County Commissioners, to their board. And so this is an opportunity for you all to hear from them about some of the finer points of our ongoing negotiations. We're renegotiating the agreements. I know this is riveting stuff, the sewer and stormwater services in the city and in the region. And so, you know, essentially want to hand off the presentation, I think, to Clean Water staff and allow them to introduce themselves. But I also wanted to recognize the city staff that have been working on this renegotiation, who are here and not here. Jeff Hunsicker has been leading this for us. He's not able to make it today, but is definitely in the lead. Tammy Connelly, who is one of our engineers, is also, I've been working on this. And Jocelyn Blake, who's hiding somewhere in our audience, has also been instrumental in moving this forward from the city side. So I'm going to hand it off to Joe, if you want to introduce your team and take it away.
Yep. And will the PowerPoint come up? Do we have to do anything? That's not it. So while you're working on that, let me get started. Yeah. Is it, which one is it? This one? Okay. Perfect. Sorry. So she's going to figure it out. Apologize for this. I know you have a tight agenda. Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Joe Gahl. I'm the Chief Utility Relations Officer for Clean Water Services. And I want to acknowledge our CEO, Diane Tandaguchi-Dennis, is in the audience. She's about to have knee surgery, so she's not very mobile. But she's here to answer any questions that the council or the mayor might have after our brief presentation.
Mayor Beatty, members of the council, my name is Bob Baumgartner. I'm the Director for Regulatory Affairs at Clean Water Services.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilors. My name is Jamie Hughes and I'm a Program Manager, also in the Regulatory Affairs Department at Clean Water Services.
Okay. So my understanding is we have about 10 minutes. So we don't have a lot of slides and I know you have a busy agenda. So some of this you may know, some of you may not know. So we have operating IGAs with 12 cities here in Washington County and also an IGA with Washington County itself as a partner. We have regional service agreements with our larger cities, which includes Beaverton. And then we provide regional and local services for some of our smaller communities here in Washington County. These IGAs cover basically how we work together as partners. So the IGAs historically have defined roles, who's responsible for what in terms of the work that we do, both in sanitary and stormwater, some of the administrative and operating provisions, ownership of infrastructure and maintenance in terms of who's responsible, our financial relationship, and then if there are any disputes, how do we resolve those in the past. So these have been kind of components of all the historical IGAs in the past. A little bit of history, this goes back, you will see USA, that's our old name, Unified Sewage Agency. I think Clean Water Services is kind of an upgrade from that. But we had our first operating IGA, including with Beaverton, going back to 1990. Then we went a fairly long time to 2004, when we adopted new operating IGAs with all of our city partners. And that was when DEQ issued the first ever municipal watershed-based NPDES permit to Clean Water Services. We changed our name from Unified Sewage because we started to do stormwater and surface water management and broaden our work. So back in 2004, we did all new IGAs with all of our city partners. That's a long time ago because it's now 2023. So we've had some modifications over the years. And in 2021, we started talking at the Clean Water Services, how can we partner with our cities differently? I came on board, actually, in June of 2021. So I'm fairly new with Clean Water Services in my role. And I remember one of the first things in my first month was, oh, by the way, our two largest cities, Beaverton and Hillsborough, want to terminate our IGAs and start negotiations for a new one. So that's how I entered my world at Clean Water Services. And I've been working on this with my team and your team ever since then. Another thing that we have been working on, which Bob and Jamie were part of, is we also had, in 2023, our new five-year NPDES permit take effect. And there's a tremendous amount of work that goes into that. And the components of that new permit actually ripple into the IGA. So it's a good time to actually renegotiate IGAs with our partners because of those new permit requirements. Another new requirement in that is that DEQ has given us a deadline to 2026 to update all of our IGAs with our cities in Washington County. So when we are done with Beaverton and Hillsborough, hopefully soon, we'll start the process to negotiate new IGAs, probably based on the work that we've done with your city, with our other city partners. Wanted to give you just a sense of overall where we are. These are the two cities we were actually negotiating at the same time with Hillsborough and with Beaverton. Our project was really in two components. I had the first part with the team and that started with Beaverton back in March of 2022. And we spent almost a full year meeting once, sometimes twice a month with your staff, just going through everything that we do together. You have a lot of new staff and new roles. We have new staff and new roles. So we really touched on everything we do in terms of the work we do together and how we do it to kind of bridge that understanding and build that partnership and strengthen that partnership. Then we got into Phase Two, which was really handed off to Bob and Jamie in a small group with your staff of creating that new IGA, once we went through that first year of working together. We did not take the existing IGA and just want to modify it. We actually started with a clean slate. We are co-creating that document together, co-writing it, of course, working with Hillsborough as well. We are getting close to the end of that process where the IGAs will be finalized and hopefully will come in front of you before the end of the year. We're targeting hopefully by December for it to be hopefully in front of you for adoption. We'll probably be in Hillsborough in November in front of their council. And then we will also go to the Board, the Board of Directors for Clean Water Services, which, as you probably know, is also the same Board of County Commissioners. So that's a little bit about the time and energy that we have placed in that. I'm going to hand it off to Bob to talk about the next slide.
Thank you, Joe. Members of the council, I just wanted to touch on a couple of things. First of all, in retrospect, I would have retitled this slide instead of saying negotiation, which implies kind of a antagonistic interaction. We really did focus on co-creation. And we did start with a complete blank slate. As your city, or as your city manager may remember, we did start with a whiteboard to try to understand what a number of the issues that the city had, what was important to them, what they wanted to address in this IGA update. Part of what we wanted to do from Clean Water Services vision is to ensure a number of things. And to describe those, I wanted to point out that we are in a very heavily regulated business in the stormwater and sewer business. We receive regulation and oversight from both EPA and Oregon's DEQ. It's also a very important business for human health and protecting and preserving the environment and also because it can be very expensive. So it's important that we approach these and resolve problems. Much of what we wanted to be able to do is to recognize that although we're heavily regulated, we also have a lot of opportunity for deciding how we approach and resolve that regulation. For us to be most effective at that, we need to really understand what the city's constraints are, what their objectives are, and we need to be able to explain to the city what we need to be able to achieve as well. And that's what we focused on, first, getting that understanding, and then, secondly, to start to craft what that IGA would look like, clarifying what our expectations were, and as best we can to be clear on identifying roles, responsibility, and ownership so that we can be most efficient implementing our programs and collaborating with our programs. And with that, I will turn it over to Jamie. Wrongly.
So while they're doing that, I'll kind of close up with some of the key successes of this process. And we've had a lot of successes, even though the IGA isn't even finalized yet. One of them, and probably the biggest focus for us, was developing that strong peer relationship between Clean Water Services and City of Beaverton. The meetings were a lot of fun, actually, which you wouldn't think of for an IGA update process. We met in person almost every time and very frequently. We would go out to lunch, too. So we made sure that this was a fun process where we were also focusing on our relationship before really getting into the details of actually the negotiations, or as Bob was saying, just kind of working through those issues in the IGA. A better understanding of some of the issues unique to Beaverton, as you are all aware. The City of Beaverton's city limits are Swiss cheese and bananas, as I've heard terms being used. And that was something that I'm not sure Clean Water Services had a full comprehension of before we went through this update process. So that was just an example of some of the many things that we, you know, found out or learned about through this process. Strong communication and partnership during our recent NPDES permit renewal update. Prior to the permit being reissued at the beginning of this year, we did a lot of outreach. Clean Water Services did a lot of outreach with our co-implementers and stakeholders to get feedback on that permit renewal process. And City of Beaverton was one of those who provided input and comments and feedback on that permit. And we did take those into our negotiations with DEQ, which did result in a more flexible permit in the end. So good outcomes from that process. Clear definition of ownership and maintenance was something we really focused on in this IGA update. In past IGAs, there was mostly a focus on maintenance. We wanted to make sure that the ownership responsibility was clarified in this version of the IGA, especially as issues like asset transfer come up or annexation. City of Beaverton and Clean Water Services both will want that clarity on who owns both sanitary and stormwater lines. And then again, Clean Water Services getting a better understanding of some of the issues in our permit that we want to pull into the IGA as we're updating that IGA. And then kind of our oversight role in the permit, but that the city is going to be taking on more of that implementation role rather than Clean Water Services. And then, again, the strong partnership. And we point out, community development and finance staff is, those were some of the sections that we had more conversations around. But again, I think they resulted in much stronger partnership between Clean Water Services and the city.
And before we get to questions, I had the opportunity last week, Mayor, actually, to hear you talk at the West Side Economic Alliance. And you said something that certainly resonated with me, and I think it's about how we want to work with Beaverton. You talked about cities can't do it by themselves. You partner, you have great relationships with THBRD, the fire district, the school district. We want to be included in that in terms of that relationship and seen as a partner, helping you achieve what you want to achieve as a community. We have a role to play. We want to be supportive of that and not an impediment to that process. And we learned a lot about your goals for downtown, for example. And I think historically, Clean Water Services was more of a one-size-fits-all and we can't work that way because what we need to do, especially with stormwater near downtown, is very different than a green field in Cooper Mountain, for example. So I think we heard that message from your staff and I think we have tools available and approach that will be different in the future. So with that, that's the end of our presentation. We're open to answer any questions that you might have. So thank you.
Well, I always think that stormwater is sexy and fun, so I'm glad that you guys do, too. It's one of those things that, like, we never think about unless something's going wrong. I will tell you, I'll start with what I think we could be helpful in our partnership. As the mayor, I get in a lot of emails about the cost of water, but it's not necessarily the cost of water. It's our joint partnership when they get their bill, and it's really high. And so we share that billing agreement, but we shoulder all of the burden of explanation to the community when rates go up from both sides. And so my request to you guys would be to help us create a talking points when we go through rate adjustments and what that is. We deal with it with trash, too. Like, we're the bad guys and we're just part of the equation. And so it's really hard and nuanced for our community members to understand when they see the bill that it's actually two separate agencies that are billing at the same time. I know some other partners have gone to, like, actually explaining on the bill and how they're doing it. I don't know if we're there, but I think what we do need is some help and partnership with communication because it's really hard for our community. And we're going to have a conversation later about raising water rates. And we all are having to do it to survive. So that would be my request. Actually, I lied, I have two. I desperately want us to daylight these creeks outside here. It's been in our Creekside Master Plan for over a decade. I think about it from an amenity standpoint outside of our resur, a need. We know that you guys need to step down when you're infusing water back into the tributaries and rivers, that it needs to be a little bit cooler than what it is. And we think we could partner in that by using our waterways here to create amenity and solve two things at the same time. So please help us with both of those things. And I think we're going to have a new, great partnership. And Dan better negotiate the best contract of his life, so. Anything else? Awesome. Well, thank you so much for joining us this evening and good luck with your knee surgery.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we are moving up. Action item... Two, sorry. Yep, two, three, one to three. Discussion of agenda topics for our November 2023 council goal. We're going to cap this at 15 minutes, so when we're discussing today, make sure your points are concise so we can give the city manager some direction, because we have a lot of staff waiting. City manager?
Yeah, as a reminder, so on the 5th of September, council directed staff to schedule a work session to discuss the agenda topics for your upcoming retreat. That's been scheduled for November 3rd and 4th. And this year, it's a little different. We did it earlier so we could better align with the budget development process. As the mayor said, what I'm looking for this evening is themes amongst the council, looking for a majority or more, so that I can give that input to the facilitator. And as you know, you will individually be interviewed by the facilitator, and that will, again, inform the agenda for your retreat. That concludes my remarks.
Can you, for a point of clarification, remind us, like, this is not a traditional goal-setting session?
Yes. So your last retreat was in February of this year. And so, again, the reason why we're meeting so soon is so we can better align with the budget development process and the council. So less than a year ago, the council had identified a number of priorities which are listed in the agenda bill. And so the idea is that we would just reaffirm those priorities, give you an update on what we're doing with those priorities, and any additional clarification that you need. And then we have a number of other things that we would like to present to you that are fiscal-related. However, there may be other topics that council would like to discuss, and that's what we're here to find out.
I think from my perspective, city manager, I'd like an update on our finances and where we are with the goals. I think the last few meetings, we've had a lot of conversation around still not clear understanding of the charter, still not figuring out this transition well, and I felt like we made a large commitment to the year of boring. And we're nine months in, and I still feel like we have not been boring enough. And so that was what I find most important. Counselor Hussin?
Yeah, I'll be fast. I just wanted to make sure that in the two days that we have enough time to talk about budget at a high policy level, that we're all able to weigh in around any major budget things that we should be aware of. It'd be nice if we had time to talk about clarity on boards and commissions. I feel like that's been a hot topic. I'd like us to really land roles and procedures. This might not be Jenny, but the city attorney's office, maybe if we had a document to react to in November, and obviously, any other priorities that we want to focus on. That's it.
So I do...
Sorry, use the chat. Counselor Teeter?
Yeah, thank you. Boards and commissions conversations is definitely at the top, one of the issues that's up at the top of my list. We just had Beaverton Committee on Aging meeting this week, Beaverton Arts Commission meeting this week, and I've heard from board members and other boards and commissions, too, that just really struggle knowing their roles and how they fit within the system and how they can do the best work that contributes to the direction of the city, and knowing how they fit in with council priorities. So I would love to have a deeper dive on the future of boards and commissions and their structure and how they can align with our goals and priorities. I've got a whole lot of priorities that I'm sure we'll talk about during the retreat. Funding is at the top of my list. Part of that is general fund. Part of it is also climate and street funding, and how can we be addressing those challenges that we're facing, too? And then I would love to talk about annexation, but that's likely a much larger conversation that'll happen over the next several years. But I just want people to know it's at the top of my head as a large strategy overall for the city.
I think what we're hearing through some of these themes, though, is new things. And so what we need some clarity on is what do we have bandwidth to do? And if we're going to add a goal to the list such as annexation or those things, something has to come off. So let's just be prepared for that as well. Counselor Dugger?
Can I follow up on that real quick?
Yeah.
So I just want to affirm that. I think it's important to have these conversations so we can know where the trade-offs are, because it could totally be, we decide, oh, that can't be on the list because we need to focus on something else. And that's totally okay. I just want to talk about it.
Counselor Dugger?
Yeah, I'm going to third that. That boards and commissions is a really important conversation. Same with the budget. I think that's a really good point. What I would ask, instead of just updates to our existing priorities, and I'm not sure that I would support any new priorities, although I agree with Counselor Teeter, like, at some point, I want to talk about annexation, probably not this year, probably not a couple of years. But instead of just an update, I would like to influence some of the tactical things. And I want to stay strategic, right, because that's our role as city council. But I also, like, there are some things that need to happen within our framework that we've created. And so I just hope that we have a little bit more leeway to have a conversation on some things that, within our existing framework and within our existing priorities, that what progress would look like to us, right? If it's going to be 18 months and we say "safe streets", you know, for example, I wouldn't want just, okay, we created a policy. Like, okay, that's great, but I also think that we need to do this thing and that thing, right? And I just want us to be able to at least start that conversation. That's it. Thanks.
Counselor Kimmy? Counselor Tivnan?
Thank you. Yes, to the conversation about boards and commissions, I forth that, I think, or fith that. Roles and responsibilities, would love to get that one up on the board for us to talk about. I'm hoping that we can kick things off with a budget forecast conversation of basically what we're going to be in for next year to help guide and shape our conversation around our priorities so that we can use that to inform that conversation. I'd love to see a priorities status update on the ones that we had discussed at the beginning of this year, just to see kind of like the, like a fundraising temperature check, like, how far are we towards achieving specific goals that we had that were tied to those priorities? I don't know if that made any sense, but hopefully you got what I was talking about. And then as far as the roles and responsibilities goes, I would love to see this end up translating into something that can also be passed along to folks that might potentially be interested in running for council. I know we talked about an onboarding packet. It would be great if we had something that could be included in the paperwork for folks when they go in to fill those out. So that's ideally something that could be an outcome of the retreat, and I think that's all I got. Thank you.
I just want to interject, because we did a lot of conversations around roles and responsibilities, and what we came out of the retreat with was a subcommittee. And I think we're still waiting on the city attorney to give us that information so they could run through the subcommittee so the council has something to react to. Like, we need, like, we have to stair-step this work a little bit. Otherwise, it's going to encompass the entire day with all of this list. So I just, reminder between the two of you, like, we need that scheduled, and we need to have that work completed ahead of the council retreat.
And we're looking to schedule a meeting with that subcommittee between now and the end of the month for an update.
Okay.
So we're on the same path.
Perfect. Counselor Kimmy?
I think my surgery was successful. I could hear everything Counselor Tiven was saying, so that's good. I like to second everything that Counselor Tivnan was saying. So roles and responsibility, budget, boards and commission, what else? And then the, something that we could assess the progress that was made since we have set the priorities. So I think I'm on the same page with almost everybody, especially Counselor Tivnan.
Counselor President?
Thank you. I agree. I think the kind of update on priorities, funding and finances, in my head, they were kind of all related. The chance to weigh in on the budget, which I think comes for me through, like, understanding the state of funding and finances and the priorities. Totally agree with the comment of, like, would really love to get us to that rules and procedures, like, and I would love for it to get to be a targeted conversation, too, like. So glad to hear that that will look, the subcommittee will be happening soon, and boards and commissions, yes.
Do you have something new to add, Counselor Hussin?
Just two follow-ups that I want for everyone just to react to. And I, obviously, I'm not facilitating this, and I'm a facilitator, so I'm trying to take off my facilitator hat. Is there a space in this retreat to say, we haven't wrapped up roles and procedures? We're going to have this team maybe do some of that, and maybe that's not a public meeting issue. I'm just going to throw it out there for you to think about, right? Because if we have enough project work that we can kind of take on in this time, I encourage us to think about that. There was some stuff that you were saying, Counselor Dugger, like, around the tactical piece, and I'd actually take it a step back. You know, we moved to the council manager form of government, and we have a lot of reporting that exists, but we haven't come up with, like, a consistency around what that reporting looks like. And I'll give an example, and I'm not picking on PD, right, but PD does these, like, really great reports. And I think one of the things I'd like to see as a counselor is to see specific types of reporting around what's happening from a public safety perspective so that we can take action. And so I don't see a lot of new priorities, if any, but more specifically, what do we as counselors need in terms of information in this form of government to, like, make informed decisions? So like, is it a report from PD? Is it a report from Public Works? Like, I'd like to see some of those things, and I'm not looking for your reaction today, but it's just something I'd like you to think about, because I think that kind of got lost in transition. And so we're operating in still some old ways of receiving information. I'd love to think of more new ways to receive information that doesn't put more work on staff, but just reallocates how, you know, again, a report that we get on X, a report that we get on X, so that we could be more informed in the decision-making that we have to make. Does that make sense to me?
It does. However, so you have a manager that oversees operations. We provide annual reports to you on some of those subject matters that you talked about. So if there are specific metrics that you want to be tracking, maybe that's a budget issue that we start to incorporate, because performance measures would fall into that. So I would need more clarity on what you're looking to track on a regular basis, and that's something we probably easily could do if the council body wants us to start looking at that. But we do, maybe it's an inventory of providing you what we already have, and you reacting to that and saying, okay, this is missing some of these elements, and here's what it is. But I would need the body to direct me if I'm going to start tracking additional things. I'm happy to work on doing an inventory for council. It's very easy.
And I feel like that almost could be a work session, because it's about information, not necessarily. And we get, what I think would be helpful for me to get behind your request is, like, we get the IOIs. I can tell when you guys don't read them by the questions you ask up here. And so if we're asking to have more work generated via report, we have to have a general commitment that we're going to actually read what's produced by staff. We're all guilty of it. It's not any individual up here. But I think it is incredibly time-consuming to produce documents for us. And so I think relook at the last 10, my suggestion would be, look at the last 10 IOIs. What do you feel like is missing from what the city manager is giving us on a weekly basis? And then, like, what information you need to make decisions? And then I would be communicating with Jenny ahead so they could come with that information, because that conversation could spiral, and I think it's really important for us to be succinct when we're requesting information. So that would be my suggestion for us to prep for what we need, to ask her to give us what we want.
And I think just my follow-up to that, I don't have a strong, like, I want this. I mean, I would like to start looking, like, seeing more around some of the public safety data. I get to sit on the library advisory board, so I get to see a lot of that through my board responsibilities. But there's a part of me that wonders, like, would you want visibility into, like, an example? We review complaints that come from the library advisory board and library advisory boards. So again, I don't know what the appetite is, and Mayor's correct, right? Maybe it's what's too much, what's not, but I do think, like, when I imagine our role as part-time city councilors, like, what information do we need to make really great decisions? So see how you feel. Share now. Share with Jenny later. I'm flexible.
In my mind, I like what you said about the item of interest, IOI. But I also think there is an opportunity, because I like what you're going into. When I think about, like, our priorities, like, traffic safety is one of them. That's one we're going to discuss a little bit later. That's one that's been on my mind. I know Counselor Teeter and I have talked a lot about it. But I also don't know, like, we're going to talk about Barrows Road, for instance. And there's a ton of other roads in the city that have similar traffic volumes, that have high average speeds, and, you know, so when we talk about Barrows, for instance, like, I think about, wow, this would be really great if I had the context of other streets in the city, you know, and so I don't know that I'm, like, I agree with you. I don't know how I would ask this, but just more context around our priorities as relevant to our agenda in order to prepare us? Maybe that's a briefing thing or something like that, or? Yeah, just stuff like that. Like, I think there is something there, and I also think the IOI is a really great place, too.
I think we got a real funnel, guys, because my experience over the last decade here is when we ask for reporting, and there's nothing to report, we get a bunch of BS, because someone is like, I have to give something to the council. And so it creates work on their end for us to get a report that's, like, blah. And so if we want very specific things, I just, we got to think, I'm just telling, I'm not, I'm just saying, like, think about what you want. So we could come back, and it will likely be, in my opinion, a work session where we could flush it out and hear from each other on what's important. And, you know, we got to do a little bit of the battle. What we all, four of us, got to agree to direct the city manager. So I would say, get your list ready, because what I find important and fun and sexy, you guys might not. So that's what I think, and it takes a lot of staff time. You guys all have day jobs. Remind, if, like, your bosses at the board started asking you for reports on everything that you do all the time, think about the workload that causes. Do you have what you need from us?
All right, so key themes, finance, budget, boards and commissions. We are already planning on providing you some updates, because that did come out of your conversation at your last retreat. Priority status update, and I think when the subcommittee meets to talk about the rules and responsibilities, if there's any data update for you all, we'll bring that as well to the retreat. Does that sound like a reflection of the majority of what I just shared with you?
I think so. One last thought on Counselor Hussin's request. While you're looking through the IOIs, pull out your budget, and if there's a topic you want, go in and look at the budget of what they write. And if that's not sufficient, or you can expand off of it. Those are places where data already exists on a lot of things, and so maybe it's as simple as, like, expanding on what's there. And that would be a place that I would go look if I was thinking about what I would want.
Can I just follow up to that? I would agree. And I would say, are there other reports that we're getting that aren't giving you the information that you need? Because I'm not saying we're there at the retreat, but it could be something, depending on time, that we brought up or started to talk about. Because once we know where, how we feel about where we're feeling about information, we'll be in a better place to direct Jenny. Thanks.
All right. Speaking of the infamous road, Agenda Bill 23186, Barrows Road Safety Evaluation Finding. Tim, welcome to the hot seat. Jabra, you can join him.
Good evening. We are here tonight to present some findings on Barrows Road Safety Evaluation. You know Jabra Kasha. He's the city transportation engineer, and I'm Tim Elsie. I'm your public works director, and I will turn it over to Jabra.
Good evening. Let's start our presentation tonight. It's about Barrows Road Safety Evaluation Findings. The city hired Kitterson and Associates to conduct a safety study on Barrows Road. The limits of the study were between Rochack Road and 157th Avenue. The purpose of the study was to take a look at the crashes, do a field visit to identify potential safety enhancement. The safety evaluation team consisted of 11 people was on the team. It was a consultant team, staff from the City of Beaverton, City of Tigard, Washington County, also a resident that lives on Barrows Road, and a member of the American with Disabilities Act Technical Advisory Committee for the city. The schedule for the safety study actually took four different periods during the day. It was during a weekday. The team reviewed Barrows during the morning peak hour, that's peak traffic, midday, the evening peak hour, and also did the review at nighttime. There was two in-person work session and brainstorming for the team. It was also the option to attend virtually. Some of the members decided to attend those meetings virtually, too. The team actually walked the street during all these four periods. The team actually walked the street during all these four periods. Looking at the crash data on Barrows Road, from January 2012 to December 2021, and this data was from ODOT crash data. There were 41 total reported crashes on Barrows Road. The type or severity of these crashes were fatal crashes, non-injury, injury crashes, non-fatal injury, and property damage only. If you look at the crash history on this diagram, this gives you the number of crashes per year. So here in 2012, it shows five. 2013, it climbed up to eight. 14 dropped to one. And then it climbed back up. And in 2018, it's kind of dropped down and continued kind of steady between two and three. The location of these crashes, where did they happen? The majority of the crashes occurred on Barrows Road at Rochack Road. Melganser Lane had two, 160th Avenue, four, 157th Avenue had two, and 154th Avenue has had four crashes during this 10-year period. The crash severity. These, these crashes were related to speeding. If we split all 41 crashes, 10 of them were related to speeding. The other 31 were not. It's for other things like distracting, distracted driving, human error. You'd be surprised if you read those reports, why did these crashes happen? If you look at alcohol, the use of alcohol, only four of those 41 were actually people were drunk. The other 37, there was no alcohol involved. Although it was no alcohol, but there was one fatality. And that fatality was due to speeding. That person was driving on a motorcycle at 80 miles per hour. So looking at the crash summary, it looks like there's a decrease in crash numbers since 2018. It dropped down pretty, quite a few. The most common type of crashes are fixed objects. This includes all the crashes that, most of the crashes on the roundabout. There was one fatality within those 10 years. And I want to mention, this is, was still 2021. In 22, 2022, we had one fatality also. It was a pedestrian crash near 157th. Because we were looking at just those available data for those 10 years. That's why it's not included with this data. You might hear, hey, there was another fatality there. It's not mentioned in the study. But it wasn't mentioned for that reason. The crashes, the crash concentration was in the evening. 49% of those crashes kind of happened during the dark time. So the, the safety team identified safety or corridor issues. Number one was high number of roundabout-related crashes, inconsistent pedestrian facilities. There is a gap in sidewalks, inconsistent bicycle facilities, also long gaps with bicycle facilities on Barrows. There is a high demand for pedestrian crossings at all the intersections, including the roundabout. The speeds were high on Barrows Road. I mean, the 85th percentile speed was 41 miles per hour. And this is close to 157th. This means that 85% of the drivers drive at 41 or less. And the posted speed is 35. Also, the elimination, there was some deficiencies, deficiencies in elimination between the roundabout and 157, 154. The team also identified safety improvements. And they were categorized by low-cost, short-term solutions that could be done real quick, medium-cost, short-term solutions, medium-cost, high-term, long-term solutions, and high-cost, long-term solutions. The reason it's long, long-term and high cost because of the available funding. That's why it was labeled long-term. Low-cost solutions that were identified is adding vegetation to the roundabout center island, implementing transverse travel lane edge bars. Those are markings that they extend from the edge of the lane inside on both sides of the street. There are studies that found out that it helps in reducing the travel speed by doing this. Also, there was some issues with the sidewalks that needs some leveling or paving on Barrows. Reducing the travel lane to 11 feet. Currently, it's 12. So if you make it 11, it may help reducing the speed, too. This could be done by striping the street, adding a fog line, edge line, and the existing yellow line on the other side. Also, reducing the posted speed limit to 30 miles per hour. This is already in the works. ODOT just approved reducing the posted speed limit on Barrows Road from 35 to 30 miles per hour. The plans are prepared. We are sent to operation for installation, and it should be completed within two weeks. Medium-cost, short-term solutions is realigning the eastbound exit lane to accommodate a sidewalk. Basically, we'll shift the lane a little bit to the north for eastbound traffic. So we'll have some room to add a sidewalk between Rochack and 160th. That's where a piece of sidewalk is missing. That's how it could be done. Provide enhanced crossing at 160th Avenue. This could be markings, signings, flashing beacons. And also upgrading the ADA ramps at all intersections within that section of the street. Provide street lighting in advance of the pedestrian crossing. Installing speed, speed feedback sign for eastbound traffic. Currently, we have one for the westbound traffic, so we'll add another one for the eastbound. Also installing luminaires or lights. There are PGE poles on the south side of the street that we could pay a fee and ask PGE to install street lights on their poles to improve the lighting on the street. Medium-cost, long-term solutions included installing rectangular rapid flashing beacons on two approaches to the roundabout on Barrows. Basically, they will be installed at the crossing when you cross Barrows at the roundabout. Provide curb extensions on 157th Avenue, and also providing curb extensions on 160th Avenue. Those for pedestrian, safety improvements. High-cost solution. Realigning the east leg of Barrows. Basically, we have to improve the westbound approach to make it align up with the center island. Currently, the lane is shifted a little bit to the north. So if we do this, at least drivers approaching the roundabout, they could see the roundabout and they may reduce the speed, too. But it's quite a bit of gas to do this. Installing raised pedestrian, pedestrian crossing on all approaches on the roundabout. Basically, the crossings will be like a long speed home. Widening Barrows Road to the east of 160th Avenue. Currently, Barrows Road is missing the bike lane in that area. So you widen it, you add bike lanes, you could add median islands, too. Another idea was to install a multi-use path between Barrows Park and Rochack Lane. Instead of having bike lanes, you'll have a multi-use path on the south side. We have painted median islands. Those could be reconstructed, reconstructed and have actual median islands with curbs. So it's more effective for reducing the speed. Consider adding median treatments. Median treatments are reflectors or guideposts within the median islands. And the big thing here is replacing to do the two-way stop control at the 157th and 160th, basically add two additional mini roundabouts. Since the street actually took jurisdiction over roundabout around 2007, and since then, we did many, many, many things for Barrows Road. In 2010, we overlaid the street. 2011, we added raised pavement markers and object markers on the roundabout. In 2012, we reduced the speed from 40 miles to 35 miles per hour. By the way, Barrows Road used to be 45 miles per hour, and it was dropped to 40 in 2007. In 2018, we also refreshed the markings and guideposts on the roundabout. 2021, we installed feedback speed display sign for the westbound approach. 2022, we installed flashing beacons on top of the roundabout warning signs. And also in 2022, we added continental crosswalks. It used to be just the two lines. Now it's a ladder crosswalk. And as I mentioned before, we're, we'll be reducing the speed to 30 miles per hour. So how do we implement these things? There is a lot of them, and some of them are quite expensive. Low-cost solution, it could be done using maintenance money from the street fund, and it could be completed using city forces. And this could be accomplished pretty soon. The medium and high cost, actually, it would require coordination with City of Tiger. City of Tiger, they have jurisdiction over half of that street. Some areas, they don't have jurisdiction over it in the Progress Ridge area. But the majority of the street is between Beaverton and City of Tiger. So they need to basically be part of that coordination and also get into agreements to agree who's going to pay for what, basically. And this might take some time. With that, this is the end of the presentation, and we're here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you for the very detailed presentation. We appreciate it. I think where I still, where I struggle is where this fits in with the active transportation plan. When we're talking about using resources like the street fund that already has a lot of allocation and demand and pressure on it, how does this road fit into our overall road? And then what, what are we doing to systematically address certain areas? Because when I look at our high-crash corridors, this isn't even in the top 10, is it?
No, it's not in the top 10.
And we have very low-income neighborhoods that are in the top 10 that get very little attention, very little like this kind of work done on Allen Boulevard and some of the arterials that come off of it. I mean, two of our largest crash intersections are on Allen Boulevard with very low-income families in our lowest census tract neighborhood. And there's been no study of this nature done to that. And so I'm all for the low cost. I think the implication, I've talked with the Tiger Mayor. I've been out there with her. We've walked the street together. I think we can take this report and have a continued conversation with them. But I'm kind of, I'm struggling on what we do. Because if we pluck this road out, what do we do with the rest of the city? And how do we use that fund in the most appropriate way from this body to do some of these? Some of those things, I looked like the PGE pole stuff. Can we just call PGE and ask them to do it? Like, can some of that stuff just be done now without a lot of direction and without us like having to go deep into this fund?
Mayor, could I just interject and remind the council that this was an item that the council had asked us to bring back and asked us to work on? So we're trying to button this up and be responsive to the council's direction, which was some time ago. So normally, we may have not done this work, but this was in response to direction from the council.
Counselor Kimmy.
Yeah, thank you for the report. You guys are busy always trying to make our roads safer. My question is, when you look at the data, what time of the day was most of the crashes occurred? Like, if it says evening, but then what is the time?
I can get you this information. I have to go through data and break it down, basically.
Okay. Then what, what day of the week? There's a reason behind the question is that we have to identify the problem. Because road might, might not be a problem, right? So if you're putting all this money and safety measures to the road where road might not be an issue. So I want to go back, if I'm going to make some changes, to find out what time of the day and what day of the week, and what are the ages of the people who got into accidents and with injuries? So because the Rochack Road, where I remember, is a roundabout. The problem is, I think, accident occurs both ways, eastbound and westbound, usually at night. And that's, that's my understanding of it. So I do want to correctly diagnose the issue and address the issue. If it's a driver problem, then what can we do to address that issue? Make it more light? Maybe they are able to see it? Maybe park the police vehicle for an entire month in that specific time of the day to make sure we send that message that no speeding is allowed? And those, those are the things I'd like to take a look at it to make it safer, but correctly diagnose the problem.
I have a few answers to your question, specifically on Rochack Road. We, we know 28 crashes occurred on Rochack out of the 41. 15 of those 28 were fixed objects. Basically, somebody hit a sign, hit a light pole, hit a curb.
Right.
Hit a fence. 11 of those 15 fixed objects occurred that night, between 8:00 PM and 4:00 AM.
8:00 PM to 4:00 AM?
Yeah.
Do you know the time of the season, day and day of the week? So I want to see if it's light?
No, I, I don't have it here.
Okay.
Per day.
But his first slide did say light was an issue. Like, he addressed that on the up.
Yeah, so it's darker, right? So it's darker, maybe during winter, right? Between 8:00 PM to 4:00 AM, basically, right? Where it is. So, and then no alcohol is involved, which means they're speeding through at night. But probably there's a high incident time period. So I want to take a look at that. And that's the data I think maybe the Counselor Hassan was talking about for us to maybe correctly see the issue. We need to have a right data for us to take a look at. So I'd love to see that in the, for the future discussion.
Counselor Kimmy, I'd like to say you're doing a very good job of thinking. I'm a transportation engineer, and that is exactly the types of things that we want to look at. And it's, we're looking for systemic causes rather than structural causes. And you're asking a lot of the right questions, so we'll get you some answers. Counselor Teeter.
Oh, Counselor Decker was first, so I'll defer.
Maybe I didn't want to listen to him. I'm just kidding. Go ahead.
Which is a fair point, very, very point. Outside of the Progress Ridge, who owns Barrows Road?
Barrows Road is split between City of Beaverton and City of Tiger.
So what is the existing framework for maintenance of? So what is the existing framework for maintenance of Barrows Road? Do we not have an existing framework for, with Tiger to do that?
Yes, we do. We have an IGA with Tiger. And the City of Beaverton performs the maintenance on Barrows Road. And every year we build Barrows, we build City of Tiger for all the maintenance we did on Barrows.
Now that's helpful. One of my concerns with this one in particular is we're, we're in the, in the very near future adding close to ten thousand new homes on Cooper and South Cooper Mountain. And Progress Ridge is going to be the primary entertainment area for those folks. There's grocery stores there, there's a lot of stuff, there's a lot of reason for this corridor to become even more highly trafficked with people who don't live in the neighborhood. Which to me means, you know, a lot of people are going to naturally go faster. You know, you tend to drive slower through your own streets. But I think this is a really important and it is really timely for me that we consider this. A couple of things in addition. There is a, there's a federal program as part of the Inflation Reduction Act, I believe, called the Safe Streets and Roads for All. Have we looked into that? There are planning and demonstration grants as well as implementation grants. I think that would be an important thing for us to look into.
We have, the government relations team is looking at all of it. The street likely would not meet that. It's not in the top ten. Like, we have to like really look at some of the nuance of what we're asking here. This street compared to everything else. And then what policy question are we asking, so?
Yeah, I, as someone who rode their bike on this street the other day and have many times, this is definitely not a safe street. I don't, I don't even care what the numbers say. It is awful to, to drive on, it's awful to walk on and it is awful to bike on. In the short distance between Progress Ridge and this roundabout, councillor Teeter and I were honked at twice by cars that were going at least forty-five miles an hour. I know that because I have a speedometer on my bike. And so it is not, whatever the data says, I know a lot of crashes don't show up in data because people just don't bother to report them. So I would encourage people to go out and, and be on the street and live on the street and walk on the street and talk to neighbors on the street before we dismiss it. Couple of things in, in closing, I am in support of the short term. I think it's a, I, I agree with the mayor on that. I think these are really important changes. I am interested in continuing to have the conversation for the medium and long term, particularly around making it safer for biking and pedestrian. That is, there are a lot of families right there. And, and I hear the concern, I see the concern when I've talked to the neighbors. I know councillor Tivnan and I have been out there to talk to neighbors, councillor Teeter, a few of us. And, and you could see the frustration, people, I think there was even a, an incident while we were out visiting. That's how crazy it is. And then I have a question on enforcement. What is BPD, what is their role in slowing traffic down in these areas? And is that something we can kind of bridge the gap between these sort of short, medium and long term? Is that something we can step up enforcement?
Enforcement is key for speed reduction. And we will coordinate with the BPD after we install the thirty miles per hour signs. Basically to do enhanced enforcement and increase enforcement on Barrows. But we have to give a period for drivers to adjust to the speed. Maybe the first two, three weeks we'll just let it go. And after that, we'll work with the BPD for enforcement.
Okay, so that is something you're all going to work on?
Yes.
Thank you, I have no more questions.
Reminder, this is a presentation, not a work session for all of us, including myself. Counselor Teeter.
Yeah, thank you. Do you two know when the road is due for resurfing, resurfacing or maintenance?
It doesn't look like it needs an overlay, it's pretty good.
Okay, that's, that was what I was thinking too. I want to echo a few of the comments here already. If we can go ahead and do the short-term actions that are affordable and easy, just by all means, let, let's do it. I've shared this with some of the residents that I've talked with. Like one of the challenges, and this echoes one of the mayor's points too. One of the challenges with this road is when we put it on our capital improvements plan, it's not going to score as highly as a lot of the other roads in our, in our city. And that, that's really hard to, really hard to hear and to feel and to experience that street knowing that some of the changes could take many, many years to do. So I'm trying to think of, well, what are some other short-term or temporary actions we can take in the meantime? Councillor Duggar just brought up what does police enforcement look like? I was also thinking about, what about radar, photo enforcement? Central getting some more capacity for that in the future. Is that a possibility?
You mean fixed radar enforcement?
Yeah, like we've got the intersection cameras, what if we had one out on Barrows Road?
Yeah, fixed radar enforcement, basically you have to have a high-crash corridor. That's what they call them. Cities can do this if it's a high-crash corridor. And Barrows Road is not identified as a whole as a high-crash corridor at this time.
Okay, interesting, thank you. I agree, PGE lighting would be great. But then I was also wondering about some of the tactical actions that could be taken just from the neighborhood or like a partnership with Arts Commission or something. They've talked about painting crosswalks or doing curb extension bulb, and bulbous with just paint and temporary infrastructure. And I know you, in the report, it was mentioned curb extensions at a couple of those intersections. I think that'd be great, but it's going to take some time to afford it. Could we do something more temporary with that?
Potentially you could use guideposts.
Yeah.
To have a curb extension.
Okay.
But then there is a maintenance issue with those. They keep getting knocked down and you have to keep replacing them.
Yes, that's true.
That's the problem with those.
Okay, so that's something on my mind too. And then my last comment here is, I know that most of the crashes were at the roundabout. I don't necessarily believe that, that is the sole, the, I don't necessarily believe that the roundabout is the sole cause. Because by and large, most of the time, roundabouts are far safer than any other intersection style. So when I look at this, I think about the whole corridor. People are going fast through there and then suddenly they're on the only traffic calming instrument we have out there. And that's kind of a surprise. So I'm just thinking about the whole corridor. I appreciate the study. I would love for us to move forward with some of the short-term actions and see how we can get some creative funding ideas going out there with Tiger or other partners. Thanks.
As Kevin Teeter, or sorry councillor Teeter was talking, I was thinking about the state law that changed this year allowing us to do fixed mid-street radar. I don't think high-crash corridor was, was in the law change. So could we go back, flush that out and get an email to council? I think when it shifted to the legislature, they took that piece out that the city now has the ability to direct. I think asking Gwen Baldwin, our governmental relations person who personally worked on this bill would be the place I would start.
I'll do that.
Councillor Tivnan.
Thank you, and thank you for reminding us it's a presentation because I want to dig into this really deeply as well. But I'll keep my comments to three things. One is to councillor Kimmy's questions, there's an excellent appendix that was attached to the agenda bill. It's, it's way in the back, so easy to miss. But there's PowerPoint presentation that was created from the information from Kittleson and Associates that, that details absolutely everything you were talking about. Time of day, time of year, everything from where along the street the accidents occurred to the type of accidents they were. And it, it's very, very, very interesting information. And like what happened in darkness, what happened at dusk, what happened during the day. And I, I really appreciate the, all of the work that went into this and the findings. I think that slowing down the traffic and making those visibility improvements, especially the lighting, is probably going to help a lot because fifty percent of the crashes were happening at night. Not, not a huge percentage of them were tied to things other than the roundabout. The, the Warshack Roundabout comprised a lot of the crashes from what I was seeing on the charts. So that I would, I just, I dig into that because it's, it's interesting. As far as why this road above others, I think that part of it was because there was a fatality on it recently with the pedestrian who, who was killed on that road. And another fatality that had happened in two thousand seventeen. And the neighbors are understandably extremely emotionally upset about and, and very, very concerned and worried about this road. And so I, I think that, you know, the public cried out for this and we responded to it. I, I think that maybe along Allen, it might be warranted as well to do this because we have a lot of folks living along Allen that might not know how to use their voice in a way that we can hear it from up on the dais. So I, that might be something for us to consider as we go into our retreat is looking at these high-crash corridors. Maybe this is something we prioritize because we have talked a lot about pedestrian safety and trying to make this a more walkable, bikeable community. So I know that, of course, we are dealing with budget constraints. So what is feasible is something that I'm looking forward to understanding more clearly. But, but in any case, I, I think lowering the speed limit is great. And I had read in the report that the request was out to ODOT to lower the speed limit. But it sounded from your presentation that they, they gave the okay for that, is that correct?
Yes, they gave us the okay two weeks ago.
Great, okay. All right, thank you.
Councillor Hassan.
It will be very brief since this is a presentation. I mean, I echo what folks are saying. This is clearly an intersection where we've had some death and I want to, you know, I want to make sure that we make space for that. I do think that while reducing the speed limit is a step, I think that there are signals and items that we can use that encourage drivers to slow down. And I encourage us to continue to think about that. I was in Sydney earlier this year and it's very interesting the way that they set up their roads to force people to slow down. And I was also almost late to this meeting because I made a choice to drive by Barrows and that was quite a roundabout experience. I would just encourage staff to feel like they can be innovative in ways that we do slow traffic down. I liked councillor Teeter's mention of art. I don't know if that's something that's possible, it excites me. I like the other, the other comments that were made. I do want to say that while this is obviously a critical area, I want to make sure that we are elevating any other major crash corridors as well. And so back to councillor Tivnan's point and potentially my point at the beginning, how are we getting information as a council to make sure that, again, I don't want to be in the weeds, but when we're choosing between an Allen and a Barrows and I don't want to put those two against each other. But I want us to be able to, as a council, talk about those things, so thank you.
And I think it's just important for all of us. Like we just went through a priority process that they're going to use an equity lens. And I would like to see this go through that, that the council just approved. We just approved how we're going to like prioritize projects from the dais and that's the direction we're giving. So I would like to see this go through that process and compete against other priorities. That's really important. I do think though, there being a main difference in this area when I think about the way that we zone or the way that we're thinking about roads going forward is that this has an economic aspect with Progress Ridge where people are walking towards it. I realize it's a little bit further down the road. But I also think Hart Road that has the same shopping center where the speed is really high and we want people to walk towards it. And as we're developing out North Cooper Mountain and developing it from scratch, we need to think about how the roads around areas that we're encouraging people to walk. And so maybe this wouldn't compete against Allen because it's a little bit different. But do we need to look at a higher level and look at neighborhoods where they have these pockets of grocery stores and restaurants and what we're asking to do in neighborhoods? Because we plucked them in neighborhoods and did no work around the infrastructure around it. So that's how I would think that maybe this road might stand out compared to other roads that we're talking about. But we just gave direction on a lot of things. So you have some idea of where we're at. This is not supposed to be us telling you what to do, but the city manager has heard all the things that are important to us. And I think we'll, we can have further conversations. So thank you for the work that you guys did tonight. Thank you for, yeah, this is important conversation for us to continue to have. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
All right, it looks like we're on to Agenda Bill. So we'll do this one, then we'll take a break for the restroom, then we'll go on to our public hearing. So if you're waiting, I think that's a good timing for us. Agenda Bill two, three, one, three, one. A quick Metro two thousand twenty-three quarterly update by Metro Council Rosenthal and his posse Jeff Kane is with him. It's nice to have you in person tonight since we got cut off last time. So I hope you're here to wow us with your metro intellect tonight.
Thank you for letting us come back and apologize for the interruption we had last time. This is Jeff Kane, he works in the council office. He's sitting in for Eduardo Ramos this evening, who has, has other obligations. And so he's going to run the slideshow, but I'm not going to follow the slideshow. I mean, I know you have a busy schedule and I want to go quickly.
But next time you open with a slide, maybe the Beaverton mayor and not the Tiger mayor?
Yeah, I know, I know. Yeah, I, I didn't do the slideshow, I apologize, move on, please. Well, we really didn't do much with this slideshow for quite a few, and I apologize. But you're all friends. TV Highway, there's a lot of, there's a lot of stuff going on. The TV Highway is keeping moving along. It turned out to be a more expensive project than we wanted because of the freight aspects and the railroad aspects. But we're currently in the process, as many people know, of assessing the, well, I should say TRIMET primarily. It's assessing what's necessary for the bus stops. And there's going to be probably fewer bus stops, they're going to be better. The big thing that we heard from the Equity Group and from the, from the people who are living along it is they don't feel safe. They don't feel, it, it doesn't look safe, they don't feel safe. And so they want better bus stops and better crossings. And so that's the direction it's going. It's going to take a little longer because it's not all going to fit out under the one of the, the Small Starts Grants. So we're going to have to look for other funding. It's going to be a bit more of a process. But we've come to the agreement that it's going to be a complete treatment all the way out to Forest Grove and all the way into Beaverton so that you have some consistency. That doesn't mean the bus stops are all going to look alike. You probably get to choose your own design, but they're all going to have the same safety features, hopefully. Housing investments, you've heard a lot on the news about some of the problems with housing and with supportive services. That is really quite a success. We, we have, well, all the housing money has been allocated. About a third of it is, has been already built. A third is in process and a third is committed. It is throughout the region, including Beaverton, including Tiger, including Cornelius, including Forest Grove and Tuolotin and so forth. We're on track to produce about forty-seven hundred units when the original bond issue was about for thirty-nine hundred units. So that's a real positive success. And this is, this is, this is something that's working very good. And it works in concert with the supportive housing services. And I just want to switch slides. This will get into something else a little bit in a second. The supportive housing services has so far taken about three thousand people off the streets and helped about thirteen thousand, I think it's maybe a little under that, but about ten to thirteen thousand people from being, becoming homeless by helping them with rental assistance. In some cases, it's just a one-time process, but in some cases it's for longer than that. So that's, it's a big success, particularly a success in Washington County. Baltimore County is making progress, as you've heard in the news. If you watch the news, you know that there have been some issues there with underspent funds, but that's being resolved. Another big thing that's happening is the Oregon Zoo have completed its most recent bond. And now it's looking for improving and an upgrade, some of its facilities which are very old. It is the single most, the single biggest tourist draw, and you know, if any of you are kids, you know that it's very popular with kids. And it's a beautiful zoo, it's nationally recognized. And so it's going through a planning process to upgrade some facilities. This is going to be a start of a big thing. And, and I think that we're probably going to be looking at seeing a bond issue coming forward to improve the zoo in, in the near future. Planning and development grants, the big planning and development grants, as you know, Beaverton is a recipient, or will be a recipient of planning and development grants for the, now I'm just spacing on it, it's River Terrace Two, which you, which you're involving in. So that's something that we've been done to, that Metro has been granting to allow that. I don't know the exact amount, you, you guys know more about that than I do because I'm not directly involved in that funding. But I believe you've applied for it and I believe that it'll be awarded. So we can move on to the next one. The Regional Refresh Fund, we, we got a small grant that's going to go help some of the, the biggest areas such as Hall Boulevard, Highway Eighty-Second in, on the east side and then TV Highway. And let's see, the general sponsorship, that's, those are small grants that are available to help communities. They can be applied for. Move on to the next one. Amplifying Your Voice. Regional Discussions, Transportation, Housing, Urban Growth. I want to mention particularly, of course, as we all know, there's been a lot of regional discussions, been four, 500 comments on the RTP. The RTP has to be approved by the end of November so that, and I know Beaverton has its projects in there. Everybody has their projects in there so that we are eligible for federal funding. That is quite a process. It's quite a document and it's very complicated. But the staff is busy trying to accommodate all the different comments, of which there were many, both online as well as written. So that's a big, that's a big deal. That's going to affect the entire region. It's probably going to need amendment because Metro Council has identified some areas where it doesn't quite cover all the grounds necessary, particularly on mobility, on safety, and on climate. As the plan is written, it indicates that it's not going to meet some of those goals. And so the question is, how will we meet those goals? And that may require some amendment. Housing, as I said, all the money has been allocated. It's a success. My bet would be that it's going to be something that we've already been lobbied by certain groups, groups that are in the field that are building these houses to go forward and do this again because it was a success and we still have a lot of housing needs, particularly for affordable housing. And the urban growth process for reviewing the urban growth boundary and any potential needs is coming up. It started the process now, as you know, it's two questions. What are the housing need projections? How much land do we have existing? And what particular areas do we have where there might be some cities that want to expand into their urban reserves? So those are the questions that are going to be analyzed. It's a complex thing. Next slide. Together, we can get more done. But I do want to mention another interesting thing that wasn't covered in these slides, and that's solid waste. We're undergoing a, or starting the process of facilities, a new facilities plan, very comprehensive facilities plan. As you know, we have a complex solid waste process in this region. It's a public-private and Metro does some things and privates do others. And we have recycling and some of it's outside of the district, et cetera, et cetera. So we're a comprehensive facilities plan. And it's conducted a gap analysis. And the gap analysis shows that what areas have gaps in what sectors? And Beaverton has gaps in some areas, better off than some areas, better off than further east out in Cornelius and Forest Grove and better off in East County. The gap analysis has been provided, and I can't say I totally understand it yet because it's just been completed. It covers, remember, there's a whole bunch of different things. There's mixed dry solid waste. There's wet waste. There is compostable materials or food waste. There's hard-to-recycle materials. There's also bulky waste. And then there's self-haul. So all those different components are part of the analysis and they all have different components. So it's going to be a complex decision-making process to come up with a waste system. The overall goal on the part of the council is overall to reduce waste. And this is an interesting issue because it's based upon tonnage. And so we want to reduce tonnage, which means we also reduce funding. So in the long run, our goal is to recycle and reuse more. And that's a pretty consistent, clear, and that's one of the values, that's one of the regional values. But how we do it is going to be, is going to take everybody and it's going to be a complex process. So I think with that, like I said, oh, I should cover the P5 and the convention center is doing pretty well. We're moving forward with the Expo Center and its direction as a sports and other local facility. There's a lot, requests for proposals have gone out on how to do this. That's moving along. And then the performance, the area that brings a lot of money in in terms of particularly musicals, the Keller is being evaluated for possible replacement or rehabilitation because it's old and not particularly attractive, frankly. But a lot of the musicians complained about the acoustics as well. So they know more than I do. So that's in a nutshell, very quickly.
I appreciate that.
Oh, Parks and Nature, I should mention. A bunch of you were recently at Parks and Nature. We, there's some progress. We had a nice visit with the Goble family on the, some additions, potential additions to Cooper Mountain, which is of great importance, I think, to Beaverton and to the region as a whole. The mayor, as well as Counselors Teeter and Duggar were there and we had a nice walk up a steep hill.
All right. Well, I have three requests for you tonight as our metro champion. One, get us money for the nature park expansion. When that bond passed, it was promised to voters. I understand it's in the UGB. When we buy land in the UGB, it costs more money. So please don't let that be a hurdle and a reason for us not to have an amazing asset here in the city that is also the city you represent. One. Two, when we're talking about waste, Beaverton got hosed when we lost Far West Fibers. And when you're talking about a gap analysis, don't leave us out. There is nowhere in our city where we can take hard-to-get-rid-of items. I had to drive all the way to the airport. And of course, at the Metro-owned facilities, they're not open on Sunday. So I had to miss a half-day of work to take my recycling to a place. So don't just look at a gap analysis. Be our champion. We need a refuge like closer to us and we need our ability to get things done. You guys stop doing the onsite, like paint recycling, coming to town, pushing into neighborhoods. We need some of that back. It's too hard for our residents to get to your recycling facilities to reduce and reuse the things that are already doing. We painted our house with Metro paint that other people recycled and it's really hard to do now. And then, three, on the transportation plan. I hear what you're saying, that you guys are going to go in and make adjustments to the plan that all of us have agreed and have our projects into it. Don't punish Beaverton for other people not reaching their climate and safety goals. This council is incredibly progressive, the way that we're doing our projects. We need the funding. We are thoughtful in our approach. We use equity as a lens and we focus safety. So when you're racking and stacking projects, Beaverton Projects needs to stay in because we already meet all those things you're asking us to do. So don't punish us for our neighbors' inability to do good work. Council President.
Thank you.
Yep, go ahead.
Strong words from our mayor.
And I agree with them all.
Yes, they're great points. Two quick points. I got to spend some time with our Climate Action Task Force this weekend as they were kind of doing their kind of half-year planning and getting ready for their council presentation a couple of months. And I might have dropped Metro's name about the access to nature part of the Parks and Natural Spaces Bond. I think that is an area that we haven't really done a whole lot with. So maybe future partnership opportunities for that. And the other thing is, we also talked about this with them on Saturday and you mentioned two of the three Rs, but I can't help but remind all of us we also need to reduce our consumption so we're producing less waste from the get-go.
Yeah, and in some of these areas, for example, in access to nature, that's something that we recognize and there's ways we can do it. And in solid waste, yes, education is one of the things that we can strengthen. And in transportation, we're not looking to take projects away from the cities. I mean, we understand how important these projects are to the cities. But there's other things perhaps we can do to encourage EV transitions, for example. Is one of the, that was one of the council suggestions. So there's other things perhaps we can do that will set goals.
Awesome. Thanks for joining us this evening. It's nice to have you in person.
It's nice to be here in person. Thank you.
All right, friends. Tonight, we are holding a public hearing regarding Agenda Bill 23187 and 23188, which involves application number LU32023-00186, and ZMAX32023-00185. If to prove these applications with annexed property in adjacent streets the city assigned the industrial zoning district, the zoning map, and assign the industrial land use designation on the comprehensive plan map for 14500 Northwest Greenbrier Parkway, I now call to order the public hearing. Before we move to the substance of the hearing, I will ask the city attorney to cover some preliminary legal matters.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Robin McIntyre, Assistant City Attorney. The hearing tonight will proceed as follows. After the preliminary legal matters, city staff will make a presentation. Then members of the public will have an opportunity to speak for up to three minutes each. Finally, there will be a time for response or rebuttal to the public testimony by staff. Council members may ask questions of staff, applicants, or anyone else who testifies. Anyone wishing to speak at this hearing should follow the instructions included on tonight's agenda. For those attending in person, please fill out a yellow visitor's comment card found on the table nearby the doors at the back of the council chambers. Once the card is filled out, give the card to the city recorder seated at the end of the dais and wait to be called. If you've joined the meeting by phone, enter *9 to let the city recorder know you wish to speak. Alternatively, if you've joined this meeting online, let the city recorder know you wish to speak by clicking on the raise hand feature. When you speak, please give your name and city of residence for the record. Now I will cover some preliminary legal matters. The applicant has the burden of proving that the applications are consistent with the Beaverton Development Code, Comprehensive Plan, and any applicable Beaverton Code provision. The criteria that must be addressed in this hearing are Metro Code Section 3.09.045, Beaverton Development Code Chapter 40.97.15.4C, and the Beaverton Comprehensive Plan Section 1.5.1B. Any testimony that speakers present must be directed at these criteria or at some other criteria in the code or comprehensive plan, which the speaker believes should apply to this decision. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to allow the council and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes an appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals based on that issue. In addition, failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the city to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in Circuit Court. Only those who submit written comments or give oral testimony will have standing to appeal this decision. At this time, I'd like to ask if any council members wish to declare a potential or actual conflict of interest or bias. Okay, let the record show there were no responses. Do any council members wish to report any site visits or ex parte contacts? Okay, let the record show no responses. Does any member of the audience wish to question the impartiality or ex parte disclosures of any council member? Hearing none, let the record show there were no responses. Does anyone wish to challenge the jurisdiction of the council to hear this matter? Okay, let the record show no responses. Mayor, that concludes the legal matters. You can proceed with the hearing.
Thank you. We're ready for the staff presentation.
Great, thank you. One moment. All right, hopefully you are able to see the presentation on the screen. Good evening, Mayor Beatty and city council members. I'm Lorraine Russell, an associate planner with the Community Development Department. Also here tonight in person is Brian Martin, the Long Range Planning Manager with the Community Development Department. The proposal before you tonight is the Annexation, Discretionary Annexation Related Comprehensive Plan Map Amendment and Discretionary Annexation Related Zoning Map Amendment associated with the Leupold and Stevens, Inc. Annexation Project. Staff has two questions for the city council this evening. First, does city council support the requested annexation? That is case file ANX2023-00183. And second, does city council support the proposed Comprehensive Plan Amendment and Zoning Map Amendment, and ZMAX32023-00185? You're now looking at a vicinity map of the area. The map shows the location of the subject parcel as well as a small portion of a budding northwest Greenbrier Parkway right-of-way that is identified in blue at the center of the map. And that's in relation to the Beaverton city limits, which are in light yellow. So the subject parcel of that city limits to the northwest and south and Washington County unincorporated area to the east. The site is currently developed with an approximately 47,000 square foot warehouse with accessory offices. So the annexation proposal, the property owner proposed to construct a distribution center on the site and city of Beaverton sanitary sewer and storm drainage services are required to serve that development. Because providing extraterritorial utility services is against city policy, the subject property is required to annex into the city to access those services. The voluntary annexation petition was submitted on October, sorry, August 4th, 2021, requesting that the city annex the one parcel located at 14500 Northwest Greenbrier Parkway. The city of Beaverton and the property owner entered into a deferred annexation agreement, which was recorded in August of 2021, which allowed the property owner to construct a distribution center on the site according to a June 2021 Washington County land use decision. And that could occur prior to annexing into the city. Per the agreement, the property owner was allowed to seek all necessary sanitary sewer and storm drainage connections subject to the city's adopted engineering and construction design standards. As long as those standards were met, the city committed to issue construction permits for city service connections to the property. The city could then process the annexation petition to annex the property no earlier than 10 days after the county issued a temporary certificate of occupancy for that project, which occurred in June 2022. This annexation proposal also includes portions of Northwest Greenbrier Parkway that were part of a dedication that was required with the distribution center project entitled in Washington County. If approved, the property and right-of-way will be withdrawn from the Tuolton Valley Water District, the Washington County Enhanced Sheriff's Patrol District, and the Washington County Urban Road Maintenance District. And the property will be added to the Five Oaks Triple Creek Neighborhood Association Committee. An overview of the annexation process and how it ties into the map amendments. So related to the annexation request, the amendments are requested to apply a city land use designation and city zoning to that parcel and the right-of-way being annexed into the city. The parcel currently carries Washington County's industrial designation. And the Washington County City of Beaverton Urban Planning Area Agreement, or UPAA, states that upon annexation, the city shall initiate changes to the Comprehensive Plan land use and zoning designations corresponding as closely as possible to designations already adopted by the county. The city shall maintain a list of county land use designations and the corresponding city comprehensive plan and zoning designations. That list can be found in Comprehensive Plan Section 152. Specifically, it's Table 1. And it was adopted pursuant to that UPAA. Comprehensive Plan 152A states that county land use districts not consistent with this table are subject to a Type III discretionary process. This table does not contain the county industrial land use district. So therefore, a discretionary process is required to determine the corresponding city plan and zone designations for the parcel that's currently zoned county industrial. So proposal of those plan amendments. The first is a discretionary annexation-related Comprehensive Plan Map Amendment to apply a city land use designation, in this case industrial, to the subject site as well as a discretionary annexation-related zoning map amendment to apply a city zoning district, also happens to be industrial to this site. Please note that this annexation and map amendment proposal does not include any specific development or uses. So nothing would change from what's currently on the site. This is the proposed land use map. It shows the county land use districts and the city land use designations that surround the site. The subject parcel is in the center of the map in a dark blue with the letters I and D on it. The subject parcel is in the center of the map in a dark blue with the letters I and D on it. This parcel can see about the city's employment designation to the north and west, the city's lower density neighborhoods designation to the south, and Washington County's industrial district to the east. The zoning map looks pretty similar. The subject parcel, again, is in the center. It's in a light grayish blue and has the letters I and D on it. And then what surrounds it is the city's office industrial zone to the north and west, the city's residential mixed C zone to the south, and Washington County's industrial district to the east. The county only has one land use map, not two like Beaverton. So you'll see the same county designations both on the zoning map and the vicinity map. Zoning map and the land use map. So the approval criteria for this proposal for the annexation is Metro Code Section 3.09.045. As documented in the Annexation Staff Report, which is Exhibit B to the Annexation Ordinance, the proposal to annex one parcel and abutting portions of right-of-way meets the thresholds for an expedited annexation and the approval criteria found in this Metro Code section. Then for the map amendments, as documented in the Map Amendment Staff Report, which is Exhibit C to the Map Amendments Ordinance, the proposal to apply the city industrial land use designation to one parcel and abutting portions of right-of-way meets the thresholds for a discretionary annexation-related Comprehensive Plan Map Amendment and approval criteria found in Beaverton Comprehensive Plan Section 1.5.1B1. It also meets the applicable Oregon statewide planning goals, which include Goal 1, citizen involvement; Goal 2, land use planning; Goal 9, economic development, as well as the related administrative rule OAR 6600090025, called Designation of Lands for Industrial Unemployment Uses; and then lastly, Goal 12, transportation. Finally, the proposal to apply the city's industrial zoning district to the parcel and abutting portions of right-of-way meets the threshold for a discretionary annexation-related zoning map amendment and the approval criteria found in Beaverton Development Code Section 4097.15.4C. Staff is recommending that city council approve ANX 2023-00183 and adopt an ordinance annexing one parcel at 14500 Northwest Greenbrier Parkway and abutting portions of Northwest Greenbrier Parkway, withdrawing the property from the Tuolton Valley Water District, the Washington County Enhanced Sheriff's Patrol District, and the Washington County Urban Road Maintenance District, and adding the property to the Five Oaks Triple Creek Neighborhood Association Committee. Staff also recommends that city council approve CPMA 3 2023-00184 and ZMA X 3 2023-00185 and adopt an ordinance amending the land use map to apply the city's industrial land use designation and amending the zoning map to apply the city's industrial zone to the parcel and abutting portions of right-of-way. This concludes staff's presentation. Staff is available to answer any questions that you have. Thank you.
Thank you. As a reminder to council, we are in a public hearing. So this portion of the agenda is to ask questions of staff to help you make a decision later on. And then after we have a motion, we can discuss amongst each other if there's a different decision that needs to be made. With that, is there any questions of our staff? Let's see how there can be any. Oh, you have one?
Just one.
After all of that presentation?
I know.
All right, go ahead.
Thank you for the presentation, Lauren. It's actually kind of a procedural question. Since this is an industrially designated property, does it need to be added to the Five Oaks Triple Creek NAC?
That is something that we always do. I'm not sure if Brian Martin has anything to weigh in, but it could, there's always a chance that an industrial property has a non-conforming house on it and industrial neighbors could always attend a NAC meeting. But I'll see if Brian has anything to add.
Thank you, Lauren.
I concur with Lauren. Brian Martin, Long Range Planning Manager. I think everybody, every property in the city ends up in a NAC. So those neighborhood issues or neighborhood meetings can, everyone knows where to go to have that conversation.
Thank you. That's all.
Is there anyone, we're on to the public hearing or public comment portion. Is there anyone wishing to speak on this?
No, mayor.
Okay. There appears to be no members of the public who want to speak on this matter tonight. We will move on to comments from staff. Does the staff or city attorney have any further comments or clarification regarding this application?
I have no comments except to just note that it's both the annexation and the comp plan map amendment that you'll be deciding tonight. They're listed separately on your agenda, but it's the same.
All right, last, last chance, council. Any dying questions of the staff? Public hearing is closed. The council should first take up the annexation application ordinance. Then if, and then the annexation is approved, the council can consider the application and ordinance from the zoning and comprehensive plan map amendments. For the annexation, the council may either approve the application and adopt the proposed ordinance or take other action. If other action is proposed regarding the ordinance, the motion must include specific direction as to what the other action is. Is there a motion related to the annexation application and ordinance?
Yes, mayor. I move to approve application ANX 2023-00183 and adopt ordinance number 4846, an ordinance annexing one parcel at 14500 Northwest Greenbrier Parkway and adjacent portions of Northwest Greenbrier Parkway, withdrawing the property from the Tuolton Valley Water District, Washington County Enhanced Sheriff's Patrol District, and Washington County Urban Road Maintenance District, and adding the property to the Five Oaks Triple Creek Neighborhood Association Committee, LU 3 2023-00186, Leopold and Stevens, Inc.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All right, we are ready for a vote on the motion. Will the recorder call the roll?
Counselor Tivnan?
She's excused.
Okay. Counselor Teeter?
Yes.
Counselor Kimmy?
Yes.
Counselor Hassan?
Yes.
Counselor Hartmeier-Prigg?
Yes.
Counselor Duggar?
Yes.
Mayor Beatty?
Yes. All right, now that the annexation has been approved, the council may either approve the zoning and comprehensive plan application and adopt the proposed ordinance or give specific direction to take other action. Is there a motion regarding the application and the ordinance? Does a council member wish to comment or make a motion?
Yes, mayor. I move to approve application CPMA 3 2023-00184 and ZMA X 3 2023-00185 and adopt ordinance number 4847, an ordinance amending the Comprehensive Plan Land Use Map and Zoning Map for one parcel at 14500 Northwest Greenbrier Parkway, LU 3 2023 00186, Leopold and Stevens, Inc.
Literally anyone can make a second. Okay.
I'm waiting for your support today.
I know it's really important to you that everyone does seconds, but it's totally fine if you do it. We're not, we're not counting vote here. Okay, can we have a vote on the motion?
Counselor Duggar?
Yes.
Counselor Hartmeier-Prigg?
Yes.
Counselor Hassan?
Yes.
Counselor Kimmy?
Yes.
Counselor Teeter?
Yes.
Counselor Tivnan is excused. Mayor Beatty?
Yes. All right, if you'd like to appeal this decision, you must appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals in accordance with Lupa rules in any application provision in the Beaverton Development Code. All right, moving right along. The next item on our agenda is a public hearing to consider adoption of a resolution that would increase the monthly water demand charge and the water consumption rate. I will ask the city attorney to explain how people can participate in this hearing.
Thank you, mayor. Anyone wishing to speak at tonight's hearing should follow the instructions included on the agenda. For those attending in person, please fill out the yellow visitors' comment card found at the table near the doors at the back of the council chamber. Once the card is filled out, give the card to the city recorder seated at the end of the dais and wait to be called. If you've joined this meeting by phone, enter star nine to let the city recorder know that you wish to speak. Alternatively, if you join the meeting online, let the city recorder know that you wish to speak by clicking on the raised hand feature. Each member of the public who speaks at tonight's public hearing has up to three minutes to speak. When you speak, please give your name and city of residence for the record. After each person's comments, council members may ask questions of the presenter. When all public comments have concluded, council members may ask the city attorney or staff any questions helpful to their decision regarding the proposed resolution. That's all.
All right, staff presentation, please.
Good evening.
Good evening. Susan Cole, Assistant Finance Director.
Tyler Spath, Finance and Accounting Services Manager. Thank you, mayor and councilors. I appreciate your time tonight. Before we begin, I need to point out a minor Scrivener's error on the resolution. It should read repealing resolution 4813. It is correct in Exhibit 4 of the Agenda Bill Packet. My presentation tonight will cover a water fund overview and rate recommendation. Staff is recommending a rate increase on the monthly usage rate of fifty cents per CCF and a dollar fifty increase on the monthly meter charge for a single-family resident customer. The water program goals are to promote resiliency, financial and environmental sustainability, economic growth, and redundancy. We are currently in year four of our ten-year financial planning horizon, which we use to predict rates to support the current and future needs of the program. During this fiscal year, we will be hiring a consultant to complete a rate study on our water, sanitary sewer, and stormwater programs. The consultant's recommendations for water should be ready by the end of June 2024. I'll take the next few slides to go over some significant events in our history that have led us on this path to our current rate proposal. In fiscal nineteen, we completed the withdrawal of forty-three hundred customers from Tuolton Valley Water District. In fiscal nineteen, we also joined the Willamette Water Supply Program. The cost estimate for the city portion of that project in fiscal nineteen was sixty-two million dollars. The current cost estimate is now up to a hundred million dollars. South Cooper Mountain began its development, and that included the implementation of the Purple Pipe System. The city's infrastructure is aging and is needing to be replaced and enhanced with seismic resiliency. In fiscal year twenty, the city was awarded a preferred rate loan through the EPA to implement the WIFIA program, a package of subprojects totaling a hundred and sixty-five million dollars. In support of the WIFIA program, council authorized up to a hundred and eighty-one million dollars in water fund debt. To date, the city has been awarded a safe drinking water revolving loan fund from the state and sold three revenue bonds. Between the fiscal years of fiscal year twenty and fiscal year twenty-seven, the city will have invested three hundred and twenty-six million dollars into its water infrastructure. Highlights include eighty-one million for the Willamette Water Supply buy-in, Willamette Water Supply WWSP Connections for forty million dollars, South Cooper Mountain Development, including reservoirs, pump stations, and the Purple Pipe System for twenty-nine million, ASR expansions and improvements for thirty million, and the North Transmission Line for sixty-seven million. This chart here is showing all the debt financing sources that the city has already incurred or is planning for in the future necessary to run the capital program. Between FY twenty and FY twenty-seven, the city will have issued approximately two hundred and twenty million dollars in debt to fund our water capital program. And this debt is paid back through rates and charges. This is our water consumption rate forecast. Our forecast model builds in annual rate increases to avoid rate spikes and to ensure fund targets are met, such as debt covenants and Indian Fund balance targets, in addition to keeping up with inflation and operating needs. Due to significant increases in construction and material costs, staff has worked with the EPA to remove several projects from our WIFIA program project list to help keep our rates down. These projects haven't been tossed away. They've just been reprogrammed to after fiscal year thirty. So now that I've covered some important historical background, presented to you are the complete recommended rates. Monthly meter charges are proposed to increase seven and a half percent. And the use rate is proposed to increase from five dollars and forty cents to five dollars and ninety cents, a change of fifty cents per CCF. And as a reminder, a CCF is about seven hundred and forty-eight gallons. It's important to call out that our water is still very affordable. One gallon of water is eight tenths of one cent. If you compare this to buying a gallon of water at the grocery store such as Fred Meyer, it's a dollar thirty-nine for a gallon of water. An average single-family residential customer who uses eight CCF of water will see their water bill increase five dollars and fifty cents per month to sixty-eight dollars and seventy cents. This is a sixty-six dollar per year increase. The following tables are showing rankings amongst eight Washington County water providers. One agency can say that their rate is lower or higher. For example, West Slope has the highest usage rate but a comparatively lower fixed rate, unlike Tigard, which has the highest fixed monthly rate, but is still below Beaverton for their usage rate. What really matters is when we combine that for the combined water bill. When calculating combined bills, West Slope comes out the highest, even though their base rate is not the highest, and TBWD is running in second. Beaverton is middle of the pack for our combined water bill. Another thing that's important to note here is that not all cities and agencies adopt their water rates at the same time. TBWD, for example, won't be taking their proposed rates for adoption for November first is the effective date of those new rates. Their proposed rates, if adopted, will result in a twenty-two percent rate increase, pushing them to the top of the list with an estimated monthly bill of ninety-four dollars and ninety-seven cents for a customer using eight CCF. When we compare our water rate history with TBWD, their currently adopted rates are twenty-three percent higher than ours. Their, our proposed rates and their proposed rates, if passed, will be thirty-eight, their rates will be thirty-eight percent higher than ours. Looking forward to forecasted rates into fiscal twenty-five, their rates will be between thirty-four, or excuse me, forty-three and fifty-one percent higher than the city's in fiscal twenty-five. We've received a lot of feedback from council, and we know that it is important to know how these rate increases are affecting customers, not just in, you know, as themselves, but what does it look like across all utility bills? So this table is illustrating all the utility rate increases that an average customer in Beaverton might be incurring. Yeah, so their combined utility bills will increase by about twenty-seven dollars and eighty-one cents per month or about three hundred and thirty-three dollars per year. This is a seven point nine percent increase in total. The city in March of 2023 resumed shut-off for non-payment of water after nearly three years of not doing so. At the end of June of 2023, delinquencies were down to three hundred and ten thousand. We target one percent of revenue for our maximum threshold for a hundred and twenty days plus delinquent. We are significantly below that threshold at this time. Between March and June, we distributed forty-five thousand of city-awarded ARPA funds to qualifying customers to assist with outstanding balances. customers to assist with outstanding balances. We recognize that many in our community are struggling with their bills. The city partnered in fiscal twenty with Community Action of Washington County to provide assistance to qualifying individuals. Community Action vets applicants for assistance with city combined water, sanitary, and stormwater bills while providing access to additional support with non-city utility bills and rental assistance. With one application, customers get access to many opportunities for help. During fiscal twenty-three, customers in Beaverton received 142,000 assistance between city, ARPA, and Lywa funds. The current year budget, we have adopted $55,000 of assistance funds. Looking forward, our rate consultant will be tasked with investigating a low-income rate and preparing a recommendation to the city. Staff recommends approval of rates as recommended in accordance with the rate model. Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation this evening. Counsel, this is the part of the presentation where you can ask staff questions. Counselor Teeter.
Yeah, thank you. I really appreciate the water consumption rate forecast of fiscal year 2030. That's on one of the slides. Can we pull that up really quick? Yeah, that one. So rate increases last year were about eight to nine percent, and then rate increases this year were about eight percent. I know I've spoken up here on other issues about how I generally support smaller increases that are more regular, and I think that's the point that we're trying to do here. I think one of the challenges that I've got, though, is a consistent increase that's eight to nine percent builds up pretty quickly, and I try to think out of, of it is like, does it match the rate of inflation in the community, or is the community going to be feeling a higher and higher burden over time? But I feel like this levels off out towards 2030. Is it just increasing a lot more right now just because we've got so many major water construction projects going on?
Yeah, that's a pretty accurate assessment. Our WIFIA program, if we look at this slide, you can see how much capital investment we're making right now. That's a lot of debt that we're having to take on to implement this program on top of our regular expansion of the water system and maintenance of the system. So yeah, the debt is really what's driving, driving the rate increases at a higher-than-normal rate than we've done in the past.
Okay, so then the rates from 2028 to 2030 look like they start leveling off a whole lot more. Is that kind of the trend that would be expected to continue after the projects are completed? When we consider maintenance of these projects? Just thinking, would the costs start leveling off in the future?
That's what the model has baked into it.
Okay, great.
Yeah, I'd like to add that these are once-in-a-generation capital investments, and the, if you can flip to the rate component, once the rates get up there in 2030, that will pay for the debt service, and the city does not anticipate incurring any more debt for its capital projects for the water system, since these are once-in-a-generation. So that rate level at that time will be enough to meet all our debt covenants, including our operation and maintenance.
Great, thank you.
I think it's important to know, since no one was on the council when we made this decision, on why we're investing in these capital projects right now, is that we had water rights in two places that were stranded. So we had no way to get water from the, that's why we're tying in at the North Transmission Line, that's why the Willamette Water Supply Project was so important, that past council purchased water rights and to make sure that we could service the city at the level that we needed going forward, we had to be able to create a pipeline to get water from these resources. So that's just some historical context. Counselor Dugger.
Yeah, when I, a question for you, when I look at this, and I remember last year, because it was one of my first meetings as a counselor, Counselor Hartmeyer Prigg and I both asked about the status of tiered billing. And I see six of the referenced agencies currently conduct that, although I think that you guys made a mistake in Tuolton, because it looks like their rates in the charts, they're not tiered, but in the 24, it shows them as lower, but the rest, but anyway. What's the status of that? Like, have we made any progress whatsoever on offering a tiered rate?
Yeah, so we have an RFP currently out. We're expecting that, that'll close on October 6th. With that, we'll be hiring a rate consultant who will be looking at our water, sanitary, sewer, stormwater rates amongst a couple other things. And in there, we have asked them specifically to prepare a recommendation for tiered rates.
And is that a capability of our current billing system?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. All right, we are now on to the public hearing. City Recorder has given me one card for public comment. Mr. Alan Green, we're going to invite you up to, did you guys have something else? You're looking at me like I forgot something. Okay. All right, so we are, we have opened up the public hearing, and now we are taking public testimony. Mr. Alan Green, please make sure you introduce yourself, give your address, speak clearly and loudly so we can understand, and you have three minutes to address the council this evening.
My name's Alan Green. I've been a resident of Beaverton for 31 years. I live at 13790 Southwest Harnes Lane, and I'm very impressed with this presentation you just heard. It answered a lot of my questions and concerns, to tell you the truth. I'm very impressed with the bulletin that I received in the mail this year in August, advising us of the rate increases. It's very easy to understand, very well-written. They mentioned that the change or increase in water usage rate will be 9.26%. Now that covers a one-year period. Seems reasonable in light of high inflation. I recognize that the water bill, like everybody else, has increased costs, and they're also increasing their infrastructure, so we do expect some increases. By way of comparison, I might mention that Waste Management raised their rates last November. It was an increase of 5.6% over a two-year period. I thought that was very reasonable. Water is a very basic necessity. You can't live without it. If you have to, you can get away with dispensing with electricity or even natural gas, but you can't live without water. And I know that the city of Beaverton is very concerned about the welfare of its citizens. You regularly dispense grants, $25,000 or so to businesses, you're preparing shelter for the homeless, but I am here today to speak on behalf of the little man. Thirty percent of the residents of Beaverton live in households earning less than $50,000 a year. I personally know elderly residents of the city who are flushing the toilet less because of high water rates and general inflation. And I don't want to see it gets to the point where they have to choose between a glass of water and flushing the toilet. This 9%, 9.26% change is a little bit misleading, and I want to illustrate why I think that. As a past chairman of the Advisory Committee on Private Vocational Schools for the State of Oregon, I'd like to conduct a little pop quiz. Hope you don't mind. It consists of three questions. What was the water usage rate in Beaverton in November 2020? Does anybody here know that? Might shock you. It was $3.57. What is the proposed rate for next month, October? $5.90. What is the percent increase between those two rates in less than three years? It's not just the rate itself that bothers me, it's the rate of increase. 65% in three years is really pretty outrageous. And I was glad Mr. Teater asked the questions he did, because it seems to me like in the future, we might look forward to a little bit of a leveling off in this rate of increase, and that's my biggest concern. Jacking these rates up so high for people who are living on fixed incomes, there are a lot of elderly who are living primarily on social security among that 30% who are earning less than $50,000 a year. And as you, as you dispense your grants and you take care of the needs of the homeless, I just want you to think a little bit about the little guy who's trying to be self-reliant, not depend upon any kind of government services to support them, who wants to be independent. I hope you'll think of them as you consider these rate increases, and I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Green, and always an opportunity for a pop quiz is welcome here. So thank you for joining us this evening. I see no other cards, so I am going to close the public hearing. What is the pleasure of the council?
Mayor, there is someone online.
Oh.
Sorry.
I will not close the hearing. Just don't type it, we'll be fine. Brandon Roberts, you'll have three minutes to address the council. Looks like you have speaking privileges.
Hi there, and thanks for your time. My name is Brandon Roberts, and I live at 6675 Southwest 130th Avenue. As a new resident to Beaverton, coming from living in apartments my entire life, you know, I've had to adapt to all the fun joys of homeownership, I've learned, one of those being all of the utility bills that seem to come along with it. And the shocking part of this once-in-a-generation improvement to the city is that those residents now and in the next few years have to shoulder the burden of this capital improvement at a rate that exceeds inflation. When I reviewed the budget over the prior year, materials and services increased 7%. That seems on par with what inflation has been. When I look at personnel services, there's an increase of almost 17% in the budget for expenses, despite only a 13% increase in FTE projected for the next year. And the most shocking, as we all know from this investment, is the 32% increase in transfers, most of which attributed to debt service. And so as we look for this year and in the future years, when that forecast shows leveling out, I really implore the council to seek ways to provide relief to residents now and to limit any increases to that of actual inflation. I don't know how those offsets might be made, but it's certainly unequitable for many of the residents of Beaverton, many of which who are in low-income households. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for joining us this evening. Anyone else? Okay, I now close the public hearing. What is the pleasure of the council?
I move that the council adopt resolution 4854, embodied in Agenda Bill 23189, entitled as corrected, "A Resolution Establishing the Water Consumption Rate and Demand for Meter Charges for the City of Beaverton and Repealing Resolution Number 4813."
Second.
All right, it's been moved in second, and I will just, I'll make an opening comment tonight, because I feel I have been dealing with water for quite almost a decade here. And when we are making these decisions about capital improvement years ago, when we are looking at our rates versus everyone else's rates, what's missing from this presentation, because it's not relevant to what we're deciding tonight, is how the other city's rates are going to go up higher than ours. We're looking at TBWD, and we talk about them as an abstract. They serve 25% of Beaverton residents, so 25% of Beaverton residents are going to see an increase of, I think he said, 23%. And so that's where the past council zeal for the idea that Beaverton residents should get Beaverton water is that we were able to regulate our expenses so much greater. And if you look at Hillsborough's, like, they're going to double what their rate is because they're majority stakeholders in going out and getting the Willamette Water Supply that they need to service their community in growing economic region. And so this is incredibly difficult for us to do, but when we, if we look at that graph that shows us leveling and coming down, that's not happening with our partners, and it's been past disciplines of our council investing in water, and we knew we had to invest in this infrastructure right now so that in 2030 and beyond, our residents could feel that savings when water is coming in. So this is an incredibly hard decision. My mom texts me the second the notice went out. My hardest constituent in the world is my mother, who is a senior on a fixed income, and so I know this is, this is hard-hitting for everybody. It's not an easy decision, but I will be voting yes tonight, because it's going to secure Beaverton water for the future of our residents, and it's an incredibly important decision that we have to make. Counselor Dugger.
Sure. I just, I want to take a moment and recognize the folks who have testified. I do hear you, I see you. I remember the first meeting I had as a city council, hearing about the water rates and the increase, especially in a pandemic back then, felt really hard, and I felt somewhat comforted by the assistance that we provide. I acknowledge that this is a big burden. When you shared the data of the number of folks that live in Beaverton, I think about that all the time. I hope that the assistance can provide some support, but I am going to vote yes for this, so thanks.
Counselor Dugger.
Yeah, I'll make it quick. A couple things I would really like to see, and I am going to support this, but it is, it is not, I know I've talked to a couple of my fellow counselors, this does feel a little like, like, like our hands are tied, right? We believe in clean water, we have to invest. It's not something you see. I will say this, going forward, I think we asked for it last year, I really need to see a tiered rate system. I really, really, I'm going to say that like two more times, because I really think it's important. We need to give people the option, particularly our lower-income people and our seniors that maybe aren't using as much to have a lower rate if they invest in their own efficiency. I think that's going to be critical. I'll vote for it this year. I'm not going to say that I won't vote for it next year if that's not the case, but it's going to give me a lot more pause, so I think we need to do that. I would also like to see a formal communications plan sent out, particularly to lower-income households on those grant opportunities or those assistant opportunities. I think there's a, there's a distinct position that we can communicate that out widely beyond just that one community partner, which does fantastic work, but I would like to see us figure out a way to get the word out that, hey, if you are struggling, if you are choosing between a glass of water and flushing your toilet, there are resources available at the city that we can do that. I will support that this year, and I think it's incredibly important for the residents of Beaverton to know that, we had a professor talk to us earlier this year, that the single biggest thing we can do for, for water is just invest in over and over, right? Make sure it's clean. That way, you're not having to go to Fred Meyer to buy a dollar thirty-nine gallon of water. You can trust that your Beaverton water delivered to your house is clean and safe, and that just takes a lot of money. So I appreciate the staff work on this.
Thank you. I want to clarify, I think this was pretty clear in the presentation and with the answers to councilors' questions, that our rate increase is not tied to inflation, it's tied to the investment that we have made, and, and that's hard, though, because we know inflation as like something we can measure against as a compare, but that's just not, we're not just trying to cover inflationary costs right now. And I, I remember this discussion so distinctly last year, and we are saying a lot of the same things that we said last year, and that's okay. I know things take time and it takes progress, but I will echo Counselor Dugger that I expect next year to have a tiered rate come before us for me to be able to agree to another rate increase to our community. Thank you very much for putting forward the kind of total package. It's really important for us to know the impact of our decisions. I'm really grateful that we have programs to help, but sometimes that's not enough for members of our community. So while our rates may be lower than other water districts, the impact to our community members felt just the same, right? It doesn't matter that Hillsborough pays more than I pay, because I pay what I pay. So it's something that I'm wrestling with as we've been continued to ask for rate increases. And so my last statement is just, as much as I hope we're, we aren't having to trade off a glass of water versus a toilet flush, like, I hope that people do know that their drinking water is safe, and so if you are someone in the community that thinks you need to buy bottled water, your water from your tap is safe and clean, and it is because of the investments from this council, and it will cost you your water from your tap is safe and clean, and it is because of the investments from this council, and it will cost you, like you will save the money in the rate increase if you are someone who is purchasing bottled water. I'm not using that as an excuse, it's more of a like, let's think of ways to kind of help support our community through this. And those reminders of the safe, clean drinking water that comes out of their sinks is an amazing resource that is available.
Okay. With that, we will-
I've got one more, please. You're good, thank you. Yeah, I really appreciate the really detailed staff presentation and the comments that we got from the public too. I will be voting yes on this. When I come to these conversations and really hard decisions that we're making tonight, I often think of it through the lens of what is the community going to really value 30 to 40 years from now? What's going to make the biggest difference that we can possibly make now that can make those changes later? We are making some transformational investments into our water system that are already underway. And I feel like we've got a duty and a responsibility to see those through. So it does hurt to see these increases. I do take some some confidence that those rates will level out more after those projects are completed. I also want to see a tiered rate system, I think that'll help a lot with some of the concerns that we're feeling too. So I appreciate this, thank you.
Okay, city recorder, will you call the roll?
Councillor Teeter?
Yes.
Councillor Kimmy?
Yes.
Councillor Hassan?
Yes.
Councillor Hartmeier-Prigg?
Yes.
Councillor Dugger?
Yes.
Mayor Beatty?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. We are, we have an ordinance, an action item, and an executive session left, so we're going to continue to power through. On October 3rd, 2023, during a regularly scheduled city council meeting, a public hearing will be held regarding an ordinance amending Beaverton Code Chapter 2.06 relating to elections and declaring an emergency. Okay, we have another action item. Was it in the notes, this action item? Okay. All right, Brian, back with us in the hot seat. We look forward to your short presentation.
Do you get? Here we go. Oh, I got the wrong one, my apologies. I don't see 2, 3, 1, 9, 3 on here. It's the housing one, yeah. Oh, it's right here.
91.
Sorry. Maybe it just didn't open, there we go.
Two weeks on, by the way.
Okay. Hello, Mayor and council, I think the presentation might be shorter than me getting the PowerPoint ready. I'm Brian Martin, Long Range Planning Manager with the city. And I'm here to present the Housing Production Strategy. The Jenna Hughes, the project manager who led most of this, is no longer with the city. So I want to thank her and the rest of the team, including the housing team from the Development Division and CDD for this work. The Housing Production Strategy is part of the Housing Beaverton Project. It includes the Housing Needs Analysis, which helps us understand the current and future housing needs over the next 20 years of our community members. And then it also includes the Housing Production Strategy, which is our attempt to encourage production of the housing that is needed by folks now and in the future. We care about this because housing is important. We also care about this because the state mandates that we do a Housing Needs Analysis every six years. And we do a Housing Production Strategy after we do each of those analysis documents. The Needs Analysis is due by the end of this year, the Production Strategy is due by the end of 2024, but we had to front-load the work because we had some state grants that pushed up the deadline. Council has a couple of options for deliberation and decision. Approve the Housing Production Strategy as it is written in Exhibit A or some other action, including delaying adoption. As I mentioned, the Housing Production, A Housing Production Strategy must be approved by the end of 2024. Excuse me. So the Housing Needs Analysis was approved by the city council on September 5th and becomes effective next month. And it identified the current and future needs for housing I mentioned. And it got down to housing types, housing configurations, housing for different income levels, people with disabilities, and underrepresented communities. And it had a strong equity focus that you can see in the attached report. Council had a chance to review the Housing Production Strategy in April. And again, it's our roadmap for encouraging housing production. This slide has some examples of the housing strategies that are contained in the report. The entire list of strategies starts on page 7 in Exhibit A. There are just a sampling on this slide. They include basically regulatory changes to our development code that removes barriers or encourages housing production. There's some new funding source evaluations that are in the first five years. As well as Planning for Cooper Mountain, which is a growth area on the southwest side of Beaverton that can provide 5,000 housing units. So the once the Housing Production Strategy is adopted, we'll monitor our progress, well, we'll do the work, we'll monitor our progress. We have to report to the state after three years. And then, three years after that, we'll be doing a new Housing Needs Analysis and starting the process over again. So the staff recommendation is for council to approve the Housing Production Strategy as written in Exhibit A. And the next steps, I think I already said, we have to implement those strategies according to the schedule, given financial and staff resources are available. And we'll be monitoring them and reporting to council how that goes. And with that, if anybody needs more information, there's the website and my contact information, I'd be happy to answer questions.
I think this is the 197,000th time we've talked about this this year, so I am totally good. But by all means, do you guys have questions? Councillor Hassan.
No question. No question, I was going to make the motion if I can. Do you-
Yeah. Go.
Go on your questions, but I'm making the motion.
Okay, thank you, Brian, and thank you, Jenna. I will be, I would vote for this as it is. There are a few things in here that I would love to see us do faster. I don't know if we have the staff capacity to actually do it. 1.2 was increasing development flexibility in MR and multiple use zones. And that was talking about density limitations and increase in the floor area ratios. That feels pretty straightforward. It might have much more work than I'm aware of. Can you, and let me know, like how much work that would be? Could we move it up to a near or near or middle-term action? Actually, it is medium-term, could we move it up a little bit more?
The the schedule was based on staff capacity. But as usual, if we if we're communicated that something is more of a priority and we have the ability to shift tasks, we can try to do that. Working with, of course, the city manager and our CDD leadership.
Okay, thank you, that's helpful. The other item that I would love to see us move just off of the really long-term strategy is the Permit Ready Plan sets for middle housing types. That's for middle housing types and ADUs. I think that one sounds really exciting, I know that there are some towns that have already done that. But again, this, this has been based off of staff, staff, staff capacity, so if nobody else mentions it up here, I would vote for it as it is too.
I mean, I think I concur that I really want us to tackle ADUs, but I think it's such a huge body of work. I think it's, it's, it's needed. Tomorrow, I was supposed to go tour some ADUs in Portland, but we're rescheduling to look at how they're fast-tracking. And so I do think there's some opportunities that cities around us are doing it. So what I would like, I don't think I could support moving it to the top, because I don't know what we're saying no to, but it would be really interesting for us to know, as like particularly Portland and some other cities have done this relatively quickly, are there some lessons learned that maybe we are not thinking about? That we could help cut this timeline in half? Because we think it's this big body of work, but if other cities are doing it and going through the process, can we just like not recreate the wheel and steal what some of the work they're doing? Wait, are you done? Okay.
Thank you. I know what a strategy is, I understand this is a strategy document, but I, the CET is one that like I'm still kind of learning to feel comfortable with and like seeing that some of our neighbors are using that with success. It's definitely an interesting thing to me, but just because something is in this doesn't necessarily mean we are committed to doing it. It's that these are all tools at our disposal of how we're going to achieve like the needs that we identified in the Needs Analysis, is that correct?
Councillor, thanks for asking that question. The package of production strategies are geared to producing housing that meets the needs. And the state is going to be watching how we're doing. So the Construction Excise Tax Project would be to study whether the city wants to do that, and it's a council decision whether to do it. If we decide not to do that, we're going to have to have a discussion about what we're going to replace it with to try to meet the needs that that could have taken care of.
Okay, that's helpful. So there, this, the Construction Excise Task is one example, but there may be others where there'd be a secondary policy conversation that we would have. Especially in that case, it's a, it's a tax, right? So we would have to, council would have to adopt.
Yep, exactly.
Thank you.
I'd also want to add that you would want to have that conversation in the broader context of your fiscal sustainability planning, because it does have implications with respect to other potential revenue enhancements that councils may consider.
Councillor Kimmy?
Whatever I did, I'm sorry, Mayor. No, just a quick question, on the, on the medium-term, we have regulate short-term rentals. Do we know if we're currently applying the TLT to short-term rentals?
I believe the TLT comes from those when they're through the like larger Airbnb, like the ones you know about. But that's about the limit of my knowledge on how those, how that works unless finance-
No, I just wanted to-
There we go.
Good evening, Susan Coles, Assistant Finance Director. Yes, we do receive TLT through short-term rentals. Washington County under our IGA monitors that for us, and they periodically, or they have the right to do audits on those short-term rentals. So yes, the city does get TLT from those sources.
Okay, so-
This has been, Councillor Dugger's asked a couple of different times in a couple of different ways. Could you produce a report that you send to council on how much revenue we're collecting from TLT from short-term rentals? So we understand the scope of how many there are?
Washington County does give us a comprehensive report that's in total. So I'll go back to them and see if we can break that out. There are some legal issues with breaking out specifically short-term rentals, which I don't know off the top of my head, but yeah, I'll follow up with Washington County on that.
I feel confident you'll get to yes, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, your turn.
Actually, that was my question. And then because we are building ADU and middle housing, it's for the residents who's going to stay here, work here, live here, right? And the short-term, I heard some stories from other areas where it's because of that, it's increased the housing cost and nobody wants to rent it, rented. New York and other places, I think they changed the law in New York, but do we have a plan for that? Do we actually want to discuss it later on in the future? There's a limit to, limit to the Airbnbs and short-term rentals.
I think it might be helpful, because I feel like you guys think this is the boogeyman that's happening here, because we're not in New York. But I think when we get that financial report, we'll have an idea of the size of the problem, and then I think we'll be able to address it.
Okay, that was, that was my question.
You got one?
I, I just, I've been seeing you for a while, I think, on this specific one, and so I just wanted to really make the motion. Because it's been like a labor of love for you, I'm sure.
You should have just made it and cut all these people off.
I tried. I just, I've seen Brian and his work, I don't even know if it's this one, but I know you were at BCCI, maybe it was about this, maybe it wasn't. But just extensive engagement, super excited, would love to see multi-generation move up, but it's totally fine if it doesn't. Like to make a motion to approve Resolution 4855, a resolution adopting the Housing Production Strategy.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded by someone I hear now. Any discussion on the motion? See none, will the recorder call the roll?
Mayor Beatty?
Yes.
Councillor Teeter?
Yes.
Councillor Kimmy?
Yes.
Councillor Hassan?
Yes.
Councillor Hartmeier-Prigg?
Yes.
Councillor Dugger?
Yes.
I like that you switched it up, it kept me on my toes, I appreciate that. Okay, friends, we are on to council new business and we'll move into our executive session. For me, I just want to see that I dropped you guys off some shirts. Councillor Kimmy, I picked your favorite color for fun. That's the one that you got. So it was actually, I should take credit, but Cece, a few years ago, said I should print shirts that say your guys' names so people can talk to you in the crowd. So she planted the seed, but I made it happen, so we'll give her a little bit of credit. Okay, anyone have any new business?
I have one, oh, go ahead. Oh, this isn't a council new business, but I do want to just share it, because I think it's helpful to know. Two Fridays ago, our family came to City Hall, we saw the beautiful exhibit put on by our lovely art team, and afterwards, our family went over to the food carts. I did not join, because we were going somewhere else. But my niece, who recently just decided to start wearing a headscarf, had an incident where a kid asked if she was a boy or girl and proceeded to pull off her headscarf. I found out about it much later, and I'm simply sharing because obviously it was heartbreaking, but just if you are in a situation where you see something and you can say something or get involved, it was a kid, I think it was innocent, I don't think it was a big deal. My son ended up intervening and talking to the kid. That gives me a lot of feelings, I don't know if I want him getting involved. I'm still figuring out like what is the ways to try to address this, just generally speaking, but you know, I, it breaks my heart that it happened so close to this, this area, and you know, we're talking to her and she's 10, so she's little, she doesn't really want to talk about it, but just think it's important that we, you know, continue to keep an eye out, and I don't want, you know, anyone to get punished for it, but I think it's important that we talk about these things, because these things do happen. I've had many Muslim women come to me about their hijabs being ripped off or headscarves, and they don't want to talk about it, and I don't want to talk about it, but sometimes it's important to talk about it, so I just wanted to share that, thanks.
I thank you for sharing that, Councillor Hassan. One thing, actually, Councillor Hassan and I got to attend a lot of Welcoming Week events together. Huge shout-out to Palo and all the staff that made Welcoming Week events happen, I had so much fun. One thing we noticed though was that art opening wasn't part of Welcoming Week, and it would have been such a perfect little tie-in, given the theme of the art exhibit. I actually thought it was Welcoming Week. Either way, it was, it's all so awesome, and I personally, I mean, I just had so much fun this week getting to attend the different events, so I just want to acknowledge staff and everyone in our community that felt inclined to participate and share their cultures with us. So that's just all I wanted to say.
Okay, thank you. All right, let's get rolled up for executive session, so if you're not in it, you're allowed to leave now. And I look forward to the city attorney's brief remarks.